April 2nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I want to remind all present that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to welcome Mr. David Deroche to the Bushna Board of Selectmen. Election was last night and Mr. Deroche was elected. I know it was a lot of hard work and it's a long process. We've all done it, but congratulations.
Thank you very much Chairman Noble. Thank you very much. Welcome to be here.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Deroche in his victory last night. Change in the composition of the board. Hopefully the Board of Selectmen can move the town forward now with the difference in composition. Mr. Deroche, welcome.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with my fellow selectmen in the upcoming three years. And I come here with a clean slate and I'm open to new ideas and new direction.
I'd also like to acknowledge a selectman chopper who served the Board of Selectmen on and off, I'm not sure how many years in total, but you know, was for the last three years and for terms previously as well. And you know, as we all understand, it's a big commitment to do this. So welcome. Also, we need to acknowledge Mr. Chopper who's leaving the board with your victory. So congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Next order is reorganization of the board. Mr. Chopper was the selectman. He's no longer here, so we need a new selectman, a new chairman for the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to elect selectman Roger A. Cabral as chairman of the board.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
First order of business is meeting minutes. We've got minutes from the meetings of February 5th, February 19th, and March 5th. Regular session. Is there a motion on those minutes and on the consent agenda also?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda including the minutes of regular session Board of Selectmen's meeting of February 5th, 2019, February 19th, 2019, and March 5th, 2019, as presented.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Next item is meeting mail. I don't think we have any meeting mails, so moving on. Our appointment is 5:15 Chief Gallagher, but it's only 5:05, so let's just sit for 10 minutes and we'll wait. No, Chief, welcome.
I could slowly walk up here.
I'm sure we're way ahead of schedule. I wasn't sure how long the reorganization was going to take, so I just wanted to get some time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Deroche, welcome.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, Ms. Leonard, I have a few items. I want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. Duty called, so I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and discuss with you the articles that I'm asking the board to consider for inclusion on the warrant at the upcoming town meeting. There are four that I'd like to talk to you about tonight. First is our need to purchase two new laptops for the ambulances. These are called tough books, but truth be told, they're not that tough. But when we do over 1,000 calls a year, they do get used on each and every one of the calls. So there's wear and tear. These are approximately four years old, I believe. What we're experiencing now is some wear and tear to the unit itself, but also the speed of the device is much slower than when we originally purchased them, just being bogged down. We've had-
How old are they?
Four years.
Four years, you said that, okay.
So we're looking to purchase two more. This is a usual expense. Every four or five years, we upgrade. So there's a cost of $9,500 for the two, and I'm requesting that those be paid for out of the ambulance reserve account. In addition, there's an article for four complete sets of firefighter turnout gear. We have three firefighters recruits who are attending the academy in Fall River, and we brought on a fourth call firefighter who had already gone through the academy, so there's no training costs associated with that individual. But we need four sets of gear for these folks. We're currently renting gear for the folks, the three members who are over at the academy, and the fourth member is using the hand-me-downs that are around, and they don't really fit him all that well. So the cost of four complete sets of turnout gear, that's everything from helmet, coat, pants, gloves, and boots. It's $11,700. It breaks down to $2,925 per individual. I have the estimates here, if it's not part of your packet that I can provide Lisa to get to you. That also would be coming from ambulance receipts. The third-
Chief, can I start?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah, go.
On the turnout gear, is that's for call or is that for full-time?
That's for the call firefighters.
It's going to be for call?
Yes. Yep. And it's all one and the same. We use the same dealer, the same style, the same make.
Correct.
So everyone's in the same gear.
And this is head to toe?
Head to toe.
Helmet, jacket, pants, boots?
Correct.
I didn't know if this was in preparation of the contract negotiations that we're undergoing now to merge the two departments together, so I was wondering if that was the four recruits taken from EMS?
Nope. They have gear when they became call firefighters. We purchased gear for them.
So they're all set?
They're all set. Yep, they're all screened away. These are the new members that are coming on board.
Okay, very good.
The third is repair to Tanker One. Tanker One is an integral piece of our apparatus fleet. It sits at Station Two up in the north end. It is a water tender, meaning it carries 1,800 gallons of water. That is important because half of the town is outside of the water district, so we need to bring as much water with us as we can. Each one of our three pumpers, Squad Two, Engine One, and Engine Five, carries 1,000 gallons. This supplements that with close to 2,000 gallons. The problem is, the tanker is, we purchased it back in 1986. It does not get an awful lot of miles, but it is in need of servicing and it's in need of repair. There's a leak to the tank that has been problematic for a while. It is currently at Greenwood Fire Apparatus in North Attleboro, where they took it in and they assessed the extent of the damage. And we're working with a company out of Secoq to get the welding, the appropriate welding and support structures put in. We believe that we could have a complete fix. The plan was to come to you with a dollar amount to repair. If it was going to be so excessive, then we'd have to start talking about replacement. But much to my surprise, we believe we're going to be able to not only fix the leak, but get that support structure in place so that the reason for the leak doesn't occur any longer for under $5,000. So instead of coming in and asking for-
Twenty-five.
A lot of money, we should be able to do that for 25, I'm sorry, for 5,000. And that also would come from EMS revenue.
Chief, we're talking about, I think there's a little confusion because it says pumpers refurbishment. You're talking-
That's a separate article.
So you actually jumped down to the last, we have the last, we have the last article on our sheet, I believe we all have the same sheet, Tanker One repair.
I apologize for that. So this is Tanker One. We were unsure of how much this would cost, simply because we didn't know the extent of the repair that would be necessary. So with $5,000 from ambulance reserves, we should be able not only to get the leaks repaired, but a supporting structure. The problem is, is there's a chute that goes into the tank and comes out the backside. That's what we use to discharge the water from. It's not supported. So the weight of the water is sitting above that chute, and as it swashes around, it's wiggling, and it's causing cracks in the weld. So we need to fix those cracks and we also need to brace that. So I'm confident that the job will be done for less than $5,000.
Put it in perspective, it's 33 years old.
Thirty-three years old, correct.
Chief, one more point on that $5,000. Are you including other repairs to the tanker while it's in the shop now?
It has received a couple of repairs while it's there already. A door fell off, and I went ahead and had them put the door back on. They found, this company found that all the hinges were in need of repair, so we told them to go ahead and take care of that. That's short money. That's, you know, less than 1,000. I could eat that in the operating budget currently, but I'd like to roll that into this article as well to get those repairs.
I'm just concerned that if this vehicle is off being analyzed now for a safety check, let's call it a safety check, right? And we're trying to give it a good bill of health to resurrect it, to give us a few more years of longevity. While it's there, are they looking at everything while it's, if we needed it, God forbid we needed it, it's not gone twice out of the town for a 30-day period?
That's a good point. What I would like to do is get the welds done, that supporting structure done, those hinges done, and at the same time, while it's there, have it go through from stem to stern. Make that list if we have room within that 5,000, start to address the list.
Sure.
But now this rolls to the next article.
Okay.
For the balance of those repairs.
Very good.
So that last one, last, it is a very important article. It's for servicing the pumpers. I mentioned Squad Two. Well, let's go in reverse order. Engine One, we purchased in 1992. Engine Five in 1998. And Squad Two is our newest pumper in 2007. These are used. These are our frontline pieces. They respond when a call comes in. We have them placed throughout the three, five stations, and they do respond. The problem is that they haven't been serviced beyond regular maintenance in a very long time, if forever. So if you remember when we purchased the latter, we sent it to Greenwood, a very reputable company that we're having a great relationship with. And they went through it and they came up with a laundry list of things that really needed to be done, including brakes, including tires, including some valves and pistons, belts that needed to be replaced. And we funded that. What I would like to do is kind of get a baseline safety check on these aging pieces of apparatus, so that we don't, God forbid, have an accident or aren't able to catch something that needs to be repaired sooner than later. So this is a difficult one to pitch an exact amount of money for, because we don't know the extent of the servicing that may be required. Mr. Noble was asking me to sharpen the pencil and try to come up with it. And I think what the compromise was is, we have a great faith in Greenwood. They've done well by us, and we've done well by them. So I would like to access the funds that are available in the SOLA account.
Capital.
Solar Revenue Fund, from which I understand there is a ballot sitting there. So this would not be on the taxpayers. This is an account that's been funded by the SOLA developer for capital improvements. And this servicing of these engines and getting them another five to 10 years' life, I think, is a valuable investment. And we'll just start with Engine One, the oldest one. The guys have made a list of things that need to be looked at. Let's send it to Greenwood. Let's have them look at it, come with a price, fix it, and then move the next SOLA's one in.
So one vehicle at a time?
One vehicle at a time.
Until the 25,000?
Until the 25 is gone. And if there's anything left, we'll leave it there. If there's any more, we might be, the balance, if the article for the tanker is approved, we'll be able to, you know, utilize that for the repairs of the tanker and tap into the balance of the 25 if there's any there. But all told, the 25,000 from non-tax revenue, the SOLA account, the 5,000 for the tanker from ambulance receipts, the 11,000 for the equipment, and the 9,000 also from ambulance receipts. So we looked for alternative funding streams other than reserve account overlay or taxation for these articles. So I would ask your support of those. I have one last reserve fund transfer request to talk to you about. I don't know if you want to interlatch separately.
And this was under the Town Administrator's Report, but I think it makes more sense being presented.
Okay, very good. So we are finding a very useful role for our paramedics on the firefighting side, full-time staff now I'm speaking of. There's been a lot of cross-training where the firefighters are, as paramedics can jump in and assist our ambulance crew or can staff our second ambulance when needed. And we want to have the same kind of flexibility with the paramedics, who are all called firefighters, have them play a more active role, especially during the daytime when we need the help the most, on the firefighting side. So as a group, we sat and discussed what minimum level of training would they need, the four full-time paramedics. For us, for me as the chief and for the firefighters who do this professionally, to feel comfortable that they have a good grasp on initial response to emergency events, fire events. And we identified that, the initial first five minutes when you arrive, a lot of decisions need to be made, and also pump operations. So I've been in touch with a well-renowned Massachusetts instructor who has put together a hybrid course tailored specifically for us. It will allow all of the full-timers, myself included, firefighters, the chief, and the paramedics, to receive a driver-operator emergency response, initial actions, and pump operation class. And have everyone go through that, have the instructor come down, use our equipment versus having the academy come down or using someone else's apparatus. And the goal is that everyone, the full-timers, receive the refresher, the paramedics receive this baseline class, so that come July 1st, we're able to co-mingle these full-time staff, having paramedics assist with the firefighting task and the firefighters assisting with the paramedic task. And that would cost $2,500. That I am requesting from the reserve fund, because we would begin training next week if this is approved.
Is there a motion to support this request for transfer to reserve fund? Would you be forward to the Finance Committee for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
How many, oh, I was going to say, how many full-time members and EMS will be receiving this?
There's the four full-time paramedics, the three full-time firefighters, and myself.
So a total?
Everyone who would be around during the day for a call, on the full-time staff. Where our plan is to test this and judge the efficiency of it, and then we budget next year for the call firefighters who are pump operators to receive the same training.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to, it's probably good to do this. Every so many years, a refresher course has, as the climate changes and evolves and different equipment is being utilized, I think that training is necessary to keep everybody up to the same level of expectation when it comes to experience levels, right? So the training is there, and I think it's a good training for everybody to go through. There's a refresher course for those that already know how to do it, maybe catch up on a few things that they, you know, haven't utilized in the past.
Sure.
For $2,500, it's a pretty cheap cost for training.
It's a great program.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I pass this to the Finance Committee.
Very good.
Anything else, Chief?
Nope. I'll just wait to hear from Mr. Noble and the action the board takes on the articles.
We're going to go through all, we'll stop the articles.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Old Colony Charter Agreement. We're, I guess, going to move this fall into town meeting for approval. Mr. Deroche, I see it. Mr. Gaspar, have you spent through this?
I have looked through it. This will look like, there's that many dramatic changes.
It's minor.
There's some big actions, but nothing, nothing major. Town Council's also reviewed it on behalf of the town, and-
Four of the communities have also have to review it. There's five membered communities. And all the ins and outs have been worked through between the school department, and I know there were some differences between our town council's opinions on this original agreement versus other communities' opinions. So that's all been changed. It looks, it looks pretty decent. It's a pretty clean report. I'm pretty confident in voting it through. I know Mr. Deroche didn't have time to review it, but if he would like more time to review it, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
No, I would put your faith in-
I would suggest on this one that this is one that's not approved here. You know, all of the things we're moving forward to town meeting would be approved at town meeting.
Okay.
I will say, my comment is similar to Mr. Gaspar's. I read the changes proposed to the document, and I sort of understand Mr. Noble had similar comments. You just sort of wonder why they bother doing it. There's nothing here that's, I was, yeah, I was a little disappointed that there's just, the changes are so minor.
All right.
And just changing the language and just very, very minor changes. There's nothing here that does any, that does anything.
Pops out.
That does anything, so-
Mr. Chairman, if you want to describe what the red line changes are for Mr. Deroche when he's reading through it.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you just, if you go through the document that you have, what they've done, we asked them to do is, is start with the original document. In every spot that you added text, show us that text in red letters. In every spot that you deleted text, draw a line through it. So you can see, you've got basically the original document and every single proposed change. And I think when you go through, I don't, I don't, there's nothing here that's-
So it's when they made a small R out of a capital R?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's stuff like, it's stuff like-
Vocational and small, you know, right in the beginning.
Moving words around within the same paragraph. It says the same thing. It's just-
So the meeting stays consistent, but-
Getting rid of some old language that didn't make sense anymore, some new laws perhaps have changed, so this correction to the laws that have changed.
No capitals corrections.
So this is not approved tonight. We're basically, we're approving, putting it on the warrant at town meeting for approval by town meeting. So if you had objections to anything in here, you'd have the ability at town meeting to certainly raise those objections.
Understood.
There's no final decision here. So with that said, could I get a motion to approve the placement of the proposed agreement on the town meeting warrant for a vote as presented?
Motion to approve the placement of the proposed agreement of the town meeting warrant for a vote as presented.
Is there a second?
Vote at town meeting.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item under old business is the approval of a Soil Board permit for 580 Middle Road. This has already been through the Soil Board, which is, which has approved it. This is a soil permit that's been in place for a number of years. It's one of two that we have in town. And in the case of this permit, it's not one that really, my understanding is, we just renew it, but nobody's really removing soil from the site. But it has been to the Soil Board, who've discussed it and have approved renewal of this permit, so they're asking the Board of Selectmen, and in this case, this is final approval of this, of this permit. Is there a motion to approve the permit?
I make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for 580 Middle Road as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So town meeting warrant review, is that, that's the individual particles?
Correct.
Correct.
It is.
So why don't we go through these one at a time, and I know-
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer up a recommendation, Mr. Deroche is a new member of the Board of Selectmen. I don't know when he's received his book, being the election 24 hours ago. I don't know how comfortable a new selectman would be in reviewing and proving articles tonight, so I'd leave that up to Mr. Deroche. If he wants to go through it and just get a basic explanation for tonight, and if there's some housecleaning ones we can get rid of tonight, that's fine. But at any point, I think that there's some that are on here that might require a hold for him to get further information, so-
No, I would appreciate that. I expressed my concern. I haven't been, had been able to fully review all of this.
Of course not.
So, you know, that would be fine with me.
But I think it'd be good practice, Mr. Chairman, for us to go through the articles. I think some of the housecleaning ones we can just take care of tonight, eliminate that, and then, you know-
We talked about before the meeting, Mr. Deroche had expressed that same concern. We talked about a joint meeting with the Finance Committee scheduling that as a way of, again, going through these articles and reviewing-
The budget.
The budget with the Finance Committee, and that would be next Wednesday night. So, and that's, that's fine, and I think we can, I think we can go through these articles and support the routine ones and hold the ones that are absent routine. I mean, for example, the fire chief was in tonight and presented his, so you've heard, you've heard that presentation firsthand. Some of these other ones, you know, I think you need to perhaps spend more time looking at, but what is our deadline, Mr. Noble, on all of this?
I would really like the deadline to be the 16th, which would be the next regular meeting of the-
So two, two weeks from tonight, so why don't-
Got to get this to press.
Why don't we plan on that joint meeting with the Finance Committee?
On the 10th?
On the next, is that the Wednesday?
Yes.
Let's plan on that 7 o'clock next Wednesday. We'll do a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and participate in their discussion of the budget and the budget articles. But why don't we, why don't we-
Is that something, is that something that you want to do or you didn't, depending, I mean, the budgets, I don't think that we should be reviewing the budgets tonight, and I think that should be, that's all going to be a long conversation. I took a quick look. Does the board feel that a week from today, we should be meeting to discuss the budget so we don't hold a Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday night for three hours trying to get through all of this?
Sort of like, you know?
I think there's a lot of discussion to be had with the budgets, questions. So if Mr. Deroche isn't comfortable tonight going over, we can go through the articles, get rid of whatever we can. We can discuss further articles on a meeting on Tuesday night. Set a meeting from one week from today, gives Mr. Deroche a week's period to review these articles, get familiar with them, ask the questions that he needs to, go over the budget, ask the questions that we do. We go through the budget and the warrant articles so that when we go in front of the Finance Committee, if we all decide to go over to the Finance Committee, depending on discussion on a week from today, we can take that up at that point.
I can't do next Tuesday night. I can do Monday night, you cannot?
Whatever.
I can work with Monday night. I can't do Tuesday.
So Monday night would be fine. I'm just, I just don't like the idea that we're going to try to go through whatever amount of articles. We have 60-something articles plus all the budgets.
Thirty-nine.
I've looked through your budgets, your new budget presentations, some of them are new that we've never even seen before. We're already in April. There's a lot of changes to the budgets. I think it's going to require a lot of conversation amongst the board to get through these budgets. I don't, Finance Committee through that. I think that's the Board of Selectmen's job, is to complete a budget and pass it on to the Finance Committee. It's the way it's been done in the past. I think if we do it with the Finance Committee, we're going to be in a three or four-hour meeting.
Do you have specific concerns about specific budgets, or what's, what concern you have?
I have significant concerns about a lot of the budgets that have been put in front of me, so with that said, and I'm sure Mr. Deroche has no idea what some of the stuff is in the budgets, but I do have some significant concerns. One of my concerns is, is the passing of the wage and classification by the board last meeting that I was unable to attend. That's all stuffed inside the budgets, and some of these budgets have 5, 10, $20,000 raises to each individual, and I don't think that that's something that I would be willing to vote on, so I think it's going to require discussion.
Well, I mean, with regard to the wage and classification study, that is something that's been on our plate for six months, and-
Whatever blunt of time it was, Mr. Cabral.
It was, it was on our plate for six months. It was something that, that this board gave you the opportunity to lead, and you chose not to, and we ended up taking action on that-
I wasn't the chairman.
In your, in your absence.
Not for me.
We, we-
Don't blame that on me. Ran it through at the last meeting with two votes. You, the meeting before that, you said you weren't gonna take any votes because you want all three numbers down.
We didn't, no we didn't.
And then the next meeting, you ran the thing through.
No, excuse me, Mr. Gaspar, let me correct your, let me correct your memory. Let me correct your memory. So, so we had a meeting, an executive session, where we did not take any votes, as promised. We did not take any, but we discussed all of the positions. We, you know, I, I had meetings with Mr. Noble, one-on-one, where we continued to work through this, which is the task that you, I had thought you were gonna take on yourself, but you didn't. But Mr. Noble and I continued down that path. We, we got that done. We did not take any, any votes. We took a vote at the following meeting that you didn't show up at for reasons I don't understand. You just didn't come, so you had...
You don't understand the reasons, so don't say that I blew it off.
I don't, but I'm... I didn't say you blew it off, I said you didn't come, and you didn't...
Mr. Cabral, neither here or there, I mean, the discussions...
No, it's, this is important, Mr. Gaspar.
Go, keep going. It's a Ponzi scheme.
It's not a Ponzi scheme. We, we, there's significant work that's gone into the wage and classification study. You, you had, you had an opportunity to participate in that process. You chose not to participate in that process, and you don't like the outcome. I mean, I'm, I'm fine to continue discussing that with you, but I think it's inappropriate that you suggest that, that things have been done incorrectly, or we're sneaking things through, because, you know, you, you had every opportunity to participate in that process, and you didn't come to meetings, you didn't, you didn't follow up on things you were gonna follow up on, you didn't show up.
I missed one meeting, Mr. Cabral, that's BS. You know it's BS. Knock it off.
You missed three meetings. You left one meeting early, another meeting you just didn't show, you had a meeting with the school department, you didn't show up at, so there's been multiple, multiple meetings. You were gonna meet with Mr. Noble, we designated you to meet with Mr. Noble one-on-one.
And I, and I did, and when Mr. Noble knew that I was going down the path that I was because I was in disagreement, he chose not to do it anymore.
We can, we can meet Monday night or...
So, the reality of it is, is backroom deals aren't gonna work.
There are no backroom deals.
Excuse me?
There are no backroom deals here, Mr. Gaspar.
Gentlemen?
Yes.
The original point is to educate me?
Yep.
Or get my knowledge up to speed about the budget coming up, that I have to make decisions on.
Absolutely.
So, what about Monday?
I'm fine Monday the 8th, I'm fine Wednesday the 10th. We can do both.
And that was giving me time to review and, and make the questions that I have, and I would feel comfortable then making decisions on the situation.
What time Monday would you care for?
Is that open meeting, is that executive session? It's open meeting, right? Yeah, it's open meeting.
Correct.
Yep. Five o'clock?
Five o'clock works for me.
And then the Finance Committee on Wednesday?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock on Wednesday. All right. So, can we start through these, and maybe there are some that are routine, and we can get these, and we can get these done, and then we don't have to talk about them again? Line one, Article one, accept the town's annual report. I believe that's the book that's put out, published every year with the results of elections and town officers and election, all of that stuff. That's presented at town meeting, and town meeting votes to accept that. That's routine, that's every year. We don't actually write the book, we just vote to accept it. I think that's routine. Are we comfortable going forward with that?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay. The snow deficit, do we know what that number is?
Right now, it's about $9,000.
That's all.
We're checking with DPW just to make sure there's no outstanding bills. It certainly will be less than 20,000, because it depends upon, you know, if there's anything in transit at the moment, but we're comfortable with that number.
Okay.
Where does that money come from? Is it free cash?
Yeah, and that's not our, that's not optional. It's, we pay to have our streets plowed, we've gotta pay the bill, so this one's not optional, it's not, we can't choose not to pay it.
It's the one account that we're allowed to deficit spend.
We're gonna hold three, which is union and personal contracts, is a couple we need to finalize when we go into executive session actually tonight to discuss a couple of them. Article four is a 2020 budget. We're going to, again, hold that one, and we'll accomplish that Monday and Wednesday next week.
So that hasn't been finalized, that's what you're telling, that's what you...
That's all holding off, so you have time to review.
And that's, yeah, Finance Committee's working on that as well. Article five is routine, apply and accept state and federal grants, it's just giving us authority to do that.
Are these some of the articles, they grouped together, and they blanked, they blanked?
They may end up, they may end up, that's what...
Approval.
That the moderator did last year, just...
To speed things up.
Yeah, just to speed them up. Some of these, some of these are very, very routine. Article six authorizes us to accept Chapter 90 funds, Chapter 90's highway, or is that right?
Highway.
That's highway. That's routine. I'm putting a checkmark next to these, if, if I shouldn't do that, you know, let me know. Okay, Article seven is authorizing the Treasurer to borrow on behalf of the town, is that accurate?
Yeah, so with the approval, what happens every year?
Tax anticipation notices. Article eight and nine are golf course, we should probably hold those, although there have been, there have been presentations by the Golf Committee, and, you know, I don't know that way to get all of these committees to come back and talk to us again, but you can certainly review the budgets. Article 10, Sewer Enterprise Fund also is a hold.
Now, like, the Golf Enterprise Fund, it says that this was already discussed.
Yes.
So, I can find it on, on the videos.
Yes, yes. Actually, the Golf, yeah, the Golf Committee's had a presentation here, yeah, you've got, you get a lot of watching, you could do it if you want to do it, yeah. But they've all, they've all been in here, yeah, they've all been in here, it's all, it's all on videotape, so...
Yep, okay.
You've got the ability to see all of this.
All right.
Be it, when it comes to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, the Golf, the Sewer Enterprise Fund's budgets have been changed, so you may not have exact good information when you watch the meeting from then to present, because the meeting, the budgets have been changed.
Article nine is a capital article for the golf course, is this number accurate, the 150? The Golf Committee is asking for $150,000 out of their enterprise fund?
Actually, they're, they're looking for authorization for up to 150,000.
Up to 150,000.
I think that...
Well, for golf, up to?
Up to 150,000. They don't, they have some projects that they would like to consider doing, but of course are not fully vetted out yet, which would be card path work, construction of forward tees, some bunker work, the card refinancing or prepayment, tent replacement. So these issues are still outstanding for the Golf Committee, so they're, they're looking for an authorization of up to 150,000, which would then have to be not only approved by the Golf Management Committee, but it would also require selectmen approval. So there's a sort of a safety valve on that.
There was a Golf Committee meeting here last week, and I guess that was taped where they're talking about all the things they want to spend it on, so we can, but this is in their, they've got a reserve account, that they're proposing using their reserve account.
So approve the transfer funds from...
From their reserve account, from their reserve account to cover these capital items for the course. And some of this is, you know, they generate revenue there, and the revenue they generate there is based on the condition of the course, and getting people to, I don't know if you're a golfer, but...
I've spoken with a few members of the Golf Committee.
Okay.
So...
So is this one you're comfortable supporting, or do you want to hold this one?
Comfortable to play.
Mr. Gaspar?
We don't know what, do you know what the expenditure is?
Yeah, they're, they're here, they're listed.
Article nine, what?
So the question is, if it's, if it's in the amount of $150,000, are you comfortable spending almost 50% of their surplus?
I, I...
In one calendar year?
I think it's authorization up to, I think, in dealing with the, the committee, there was unequivocally no desire to really spend 150.
What's the surplus, it was 450?
450.
That's 450.
So, the Golf, Sewer, I mean, the Golf Enterprise Fund's surplus is up to 450.
450, 450.
Correct.
And they've got another 100 left over for this year, potentially.
Is that number's change, was, the surplus was recertified? Because the last number I think we had was 300 and change.
Well, 450, then there's the 100,000 that's appropriated in the budget, so that's where the number you're thinking of is the 350 number?
Oh, I thought that meant 50.
But there's actually 450 there.
Yeah, so there's, there's 350, but there's 100 in the budget.
They'd have to go through the 100 that's in the budget, and then they'd have to tap the 150, and so I don't, I assure you that there's no desire to, to spend that much money, but what they're trying to do is to do things in the 150,000 that would increase rounds. And I think if you're comfortable, we could have, we're gonna ask if Mr. Isaac is available next Monday night to, just to reinforce this with you, and add, I'll, I'll check to see if he's available and come in and speak to that.
It's a very conservative group of gentlemen that have been involved in this course for years and years and years, and, you know, some of what they're doing is defensive spending to, you gotta keep people golfing, and, you know, you gotta get the course...
Well, I understand the, the position, where they want to put the tees, put some new tees in to attract younger golfers.
Make it a shorter, make it a shorter course.
Make it a shorter course, exactly.
Some of that discussion as well, so...
Exactly.
Did you see that meeting, or that was...
I spoke with some of the Golf Committee members.
So are you comfortable moving this, or would you prefer to hold this?
I'm comfortable with it.
Mr. Gaspar, you comfortable with this article?
I'm not comfortable with spending up to 150,000. On top of the 100,000 they have in their budget, that's 250,000 dollars.
No, it's part of it, it's the same, it's the same number.
He's correct.
It is, 250.
Yeah, it's 250.
Okay.
So, again, spending more than 50%, potentially, is detrimental, in my opinion.
I think it's authorization without necessarily a desire to do that.
Yeah, I don't think they'd spend any of it if they had a choice. So do we, what, what, what action do we want in the cycle?
I like an itemized, cost itemization on all the projects.
They can't do that.
Yeah.
Why not?
Because they haven't got estimates yet on everything.
Well, I, so Golf Committee meeting last week is on videotape, we met in the Selectmen's meeting room, I, I refer you that film and WhatsApp presentation, perhaps?
Why, you're on the Golf Committee?
I'm on the Golf Committee.
You can't be on the Golf Committee, because...
He's attending.
I'm attending. It's an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen.
You can't be on the meet, you can't be on the committee, though.
Exactly. As it were, all right. Well, I've been attending the meetings and I don't vote, but I'm there to learn and watch and understand, okay?
Interesting.
Very interesting. So, well, watch the videotape, I don't think that's a conflict for you, is it? You should check it out.
No, I can watch it, I just shouldn't be participating.
Okay. Sewer Enterprise Fund also is a hold, I suspect. The Article 11, the INI Investigation Program, Mr. Gaspar, I think you understand that one, is that one you're comfortable advancing? That was the Woodard and Curran presentation from three weeks ago.
I, I am, a couple, there was the last meeting, I think it was, that you guys had Woodward and Curran, and I, I kinda have some disagreements on the way it was spun, we're spending $60,000 a year, and we got four phases to do, and we, we were proactive before, getting ahead of the curve, I just, and we're saving $20,000 on the, you know, infiltration stuff, so, but I think that the way it was presented by the engineering firm was, for lack of better words, not very good and clear, because you can't continue to spend $60,000 out of your reserve every year.
It's not every year, it's every other year. This is the INI plan.
And this is a contest, continue, this is a continuation.
This is the continuation, we've been doing this every other year, every two years.
So we've got two-thirds of the system done, perhaps, and we're continuing to move it forward. I don't think this is optional.
Yeah, well, it's optional if you don't have the money to spend, and you want to watch your reserves and make sure your surplus is not get withdrawn.
Well, under the DEP rules, you, under DEP rules, you have to do a certain INI every, a minimum of two years.
And we, and we were proactive in previous years, and we moved it ahead, so we're actually ahead of that, so spending doesn't need to take place, it's just something that I would always have reservations doing, and you can't, you know, I think it was said that it's, it's for infinity that we do this. I don't think that's necessarily true, I think that you do all four of your stages, and then you might be able to wait two to three years. You can't continue to just give an engineering firm $60,000 every year to continue this process, that's not how it really works.
But this is, this is a section...
It's a section of, the four-part section, and we're on the three-part section. I don't have a problem with it this time, I just think that it was a little convoluted in the last discussion, that's all.
So you're comfortable moving this article forward?
Yeah, up to the 57,000, yeah. What's our reserve? What's our surplus account in Sewer?
212, something around there?
Sewer was 262.
Okay, sorry, that'll leave us a little buffer, it's not a big buffer, but...
Mr. Deroche, what are your feelings on this one? I'm comfortable advancing this one, I think we gotta move some of this stuff forward. I know you, you know, this is on, you can go to the videotape, but I think, you know, this is one Mr. Gaspar and I understand, and I think we need to move this one forward, and, and I'd suggest that...
All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with you then.
Okay, I think we need to, I think it's something we...
You just, with, with the enterprise funds, you want to look at your surplus account as your, as your emergency fund, right? So when you start depleting that surplus where she just said, Mr. Cabral said it was like 260, just call it 260, we're gonna spend 60, put that as 200. 200 for a surplus account in Sewer Enterprise is not a lot of money. We have a pump station that goes down, you can wipe out that 200, just like that. You have another one go down, you're in a deficit, you're borrowing, so I like to keep a cushion. We did some things in the past with some surplus, so, the Chairman's gonna read off right now, but I know they had discussion on that as well. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. The enterprise fund school pump station.
Yeah, the article, this is, this is a article that would move funds from town funds back into the Sewer Enterprise Fund. We did some repairs to the pump at the school, which were funded out of the Sewer Enterprise, under the Sewer Enterprise Fund. This would propose to move money from general taxation to replenish the Sewer Enterprise Fund. I, my, my opinion on this one is it's something we should wait to do. This may be the appropriate thing to do, but I think right now we're in the process of studying sewer expansion, and right now it seems that some of the low-hanging fruit in that sewer expansion might be the area around the school, where we can tie some of those neighborhoods into the, into the school pump station, and then pump that sewerage up Peckham Road into New Bedford. So if that does indeed happen, then there'd be no need to make this transfer back out of taxation to the Sewer Enterprise Fund. So I guess I would propose for two reasons. Number one, we don't really have an extra $100,000 hanging around, but number two, we've already done this, so we're correcting something that we've already done. And again, this is, I think Mr. Gaspar thought this was a good idea, I think the day may come, we should do this, but I think it's premature to do it at this point.
I think that the Board concurred that it was a good idea to do it, and then there's a backtrack on it. It's 100,000, it's really $110,000, that's what the article was approved for at the last town meeting for that pumping station. I think that Phase Five is a, is a stretch of the imagination to ever think that we're gonna be there in any near term. You obviously don't look at five phases and say, well, that's Phase Five, that probably needs to be done in 10 years from now, and these are the pertinent spots. You know, I'm, I'm in the mindset it should go back to the sewer, sewer account, because the sewer users pay for something that they're not gonna be rewarded to, to make that investment. That's, that was the pitch, I mean, there's no way we're going to sewer, in sewer those, those holes, that area around the school department, so you could say that, you know, You could say that, you know, we're going to do that because it looks good, and we don't have the extra $100,000, because we're spending it everywhere else, and we just don't have an extra $100,000, $110,000 to replenish it, but technically that goes back to the sewer surplus account where it belongs, and it's probably, now that we know the board has been educated, knowing that we cannot tie users in without some special pumping station to get it over to the schools, I think it's a pipe dream to think that we're going to go sewer an area that doesn't, that's not a needs area. But if we want to pitch it that it could be done, because we don't have $100,000 to put back into sewer surplus account, that's fine, too.
I will say that one of the things that Mr. Noble's pushing me to move forward, and I plan on it this coming year, is the whole sewer study. We had a presentation on the sewer study. The sewer study did talk about expanding sewer in our town. So we've got a presentation, we've got a preliminary plan to do that, and in the coming year, that's one of the agenda items I have for us, is deciding how we do that. So we paid money for a study.
If we want to wait on $100,000, Mr. Cabral, I'm not going to push the issue and be that adamant about it. I just believe, and you agreed, that that's where it should have gone to, until we've had further discussions, and then your mind was changed, and that's fine. Your mind was changed. However, when the time comes where if you went out to Phase Five, because that's the phase it is, okay?
Oh, careful. I'm sorry. You are really good with the sewer issues, but you... It's not Phase, it's a needs area. So they identified the needs area. You can take those numbers in any order you want.
I understand you can, but you're not hitting the ones that are most pertinent and recognized as the most damaging, okay? For nitrogen levels and everything else. So the needs areas explained and said, "This is the most dramatic area where septic systems are legion, that needs to be done." That talked about South Main Street. We know that we have to get permission by the state. Then we said, "Okay, we're going to take one and two, and we'll flip them." One, two being the one from the library down to the police department. Well, all I'm going to say, and I'll make a comment about this $100,000, that goes back to the sewer users, okay, because it's their money, okay? When this, when that phase, let's call that Phase Five, okay? Phase Five gets done, then that pumping station, that $110,000 should be repaid from those people, the 300 or 200 people that are tying into it, should be assessed, that $110,000, and then, and we can then repay this money. So if that's, if Phase Five is an area we're going to do in the next 12 months, when we assess the betterment to those properties, it has to include that $110,000, and that's how it's repaid back to us. It's a legitimate way, it's the correct way to do it, because nobody else is going to use that pumping station.
Except on school.
The school paid this, yeah. The school paid this, yeah. We paid $110,000, they paid $100,000, I believe it was, it was a $210 project. And at that point, and no fault of any of us, we were led to believe by the engineering firm that we could absolutely tie homes in. Well, guess what? After I've done my due diligence on that sewer pipe, you can't tie in homes, gravity-feed homes, on a pipe that runs uphill.
Shocking.
So it would never be used, it's going to backfeed back to the pumping station, so it wouldn't work. So we were lied to. That's the problem.
We, I mean, they were in last week, week before, we asked them, we've indicated that, you know, we see that as low-hanging fruit, that it would be, it would be possible to do Area One and Area Five, depends on how we pursue it simultaneously. It's possible to do it, but we need to, I mean, what I'm going to do is I'm going to try to advance that. I'm going to, we're going to need to make decisions as a board, what do we want to do? So we're going to bring that study in, and we're going to decide to move it forward. I don't, I don't want to have paid for that report and stick it on a shelf gathering dust.
No, no, I mean, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan was done for that reason. It was a $330,000 plan. I think that the numbers that were presented by the board, I mean, I think it was, what, 1.2 million for each Phase One usage? Let alone Phase Five? Just that money alone, if you're capturing 300 users, we're going to charge somebody $3,000 to do a plan that we might not end up implementing? How do you get away with that? And second of all, no disrespect, but the board of selectmen aren't advancing anything. The best that we can do is advance it to town meeting, notifying those people that are going to be impacted, and hit with that large sum of money for a betterment, and they need to come and vote that in. If it ends on town meeting floor and they say no-go, we ain't advancing anything, so it's a trigger of town meeting.
So I'm saying, Mr. Gadda, I mean, we're going to, we're not going to leave the report on a shelf.
Absolutely not.
We're going to move, well, right, we're going to move it forward, and that's, whatever the appropriate steps are, and we don't have to talk about the bonding process and the entire process, whatever the appropriate steps are, I want to start taking those steps and making some decisions as a group about whether we're going to do it or we're not going to do it. If the decision's no, it's a no, but I want to, I want to make a decision.
And this concerns from the school of Peckham Road.
No, this concerns the entire town. This particular article concerns that area.
This article is a sublet of the CWMP.
A couple of limited neighborhoods.
That's doing it, and it's... So Red Allen Drive across from the schools, that little neewood that goes around, back to Middle Road, it goes up and it makes a U-shape, and then it's...
Reservoir State. So those two neighborhoods are...
But they still haven't determined if they're going to be able to do that, if the pipe can hold that, correct?
Yeah, it's, the preliminary is, it would not accommodate every house on the line, but it would accommodate those two neighborhoods. There is a way to run a, to run a pipe back to the school pumping station, and from the school pumping station, pump it up the road, but you would not be able to tie in, which is not what we were told when we put that pipe in the ground 20 years ago.
I'm familiar with that situation.
So, but there is the ability to tie some of the houses in that area in, and it sounds like it's not as complex a project as some of the other areas would be. So it seems like something we should be thinking about, seeing as we've got that pipe in the ground. So I think it's something we need more, we need to explore more. Now, we've got maps, we've got pictures over there somewhere.
All right, well, I'm a little familiar with this.
So are we, are we, at this point, holding this one? Is that something we're comfortable doing and to be, to be explored later? And I promise we will bring that back to the table.
Look, you know, the budget constraints and everything else, I mean, if we feel like we should just make a motion to table it and get it off the warrant, and just do it.
Would you make that motion?
It's pretty much, it's pretty much something that I brought up to the board, the board all agreed on it, and now we're having differences of opinion on what we may or not may not do, and if the board feels that we're going to take a year to examine this and see if Phase Five may be low-hanging fruit, Mr. Cabral, as you say, then we wait one more year. But I would expect that if in one year, that Phase Five is not something that's accomplishable at a reasonable price for those people. We absolutely, next year, make the appropriation.
I'll agree with that. On camera, compelling point.
On camera, all right, so motion to table it now.
I make a motion to table.
Second?
Article 12, Mr. Cabral, make sure we get it in.
All in favor?
Article 12.
Aye.
Any opposed? The GIS plotter?
Yeah, I...
I don't remember that presentation.
This is from the conservation, we're going to put the GIS software onto a plotter so that we can make our own GIS maps, but I can arrange other ways to accommodate this.
This is our article.
This is $2,000? Isn't this like a giant, the print, the big plotter?
Yeah. Do I form a carriage printer?
Do we need it?
Well, if we're going to go forward with GIS, yes, but I think I could find a used one or...
It's $2,000 bucks for a new one?
$2,000 for a new one, yeah.
You buy a used one, you know, what are you buying a used one for? $500, $750, it's $2,000, it's not 20 grand or 30 grand, I don't have a problem with it.
Do you need it?
I think when we find the printer, I'll bet you know.
Okay, so do we want to keep, do we want to bring this forward? Cancel it, make it zero.
Mr. DeRoche, Mr. DeRoche just said he doesn't have a problem with it, so it's up to the board of selectmen.
I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with it. I think by passing other numbers that are...
Do you want it?
Much more than if this department...
Do we need it?
I think I can get it donated.
Okay. Can we get a motion to...
What's the alternative? I just want to know what the alternative is.
I think I can get it donated. If I can't get it donated, I'll ask for a transfer.
Okay. Can we get a motion to table this one? Or cancel this one, or withdraw it, or hold it?
I mean, what is the alternative for the, for this department in the meantime? Like, you're going, we're going to research getting a donated one, what are they going to do? How are they going to get their, you know?
Well, right at the moment, even if we were to pass this, the money wouldn't be available until after town meeting anyway, so we have some time, and it's only, I know this is going to sound terrible, and I apologize for the, you know, it's only two grand, I'll figure it out. I think we can come up with a plotter. I think we need, I think we would like to have this for our use in all of our departments that use the GIS data, to be able to print it in a map size that actually is viewable, instead of pushing it out at 8.511 or...
Well, what do they do now? That's my question. They run the staples?
Yeah.
So the cost of someone going there and someone doing it?
I think in a, in a, in a year, a couple of grand.
Do you want it or not? I mean, they're supportive of it.
I appreciate the support, I think I can do without it.
The reality, hold on a second here. I mean, is the board, is the board, just let me get this clear, is the board of selectmen leading, or is the board of selectmen following? Because if the board of selectmen say, "I want to make a motion to approve Article 13, 12, whatever it is," it's done, it's supported.
But we need, I guess the question is, why are we buying things that we don't need? So the question is, do we, first of all, do we need it?
So the thing, do we need it?
Do we need it?
Why is it put in front of the board of selectmen to begin with?
That's the discussion we're having, Mr. Gaspar.
This confuses on the process.
Well, who would I talk to? Would I talk to the conservation committee and see if they need it?
Mr. Noble.
Talk to Merrily.
So let's, can we hold it then?
Let's hold it.
Sure.
All right.
Hold that. Coffee machine, police department's $10,000 now versus $20,000?
There's two machines originally.
It says Town Hall Police Department.
In the Town Hall, one in the...
We're shuffling them around, we only need one, so that article's been reduced from $20,000 to $10,000.
So where's it going? Town Hall, Police Department?
Police Department.
It's going to the Police Department. Are we comfortable supporting a new coffee machine for the Police Department? Is that a no?
What else? I'm sorry. Once again, what's other people's opinions on this?
I, if they need a coffee, my opinion, I mean, if they say they need a coffee machine, I believe they need a coffee machine. I, I'm supportive of the request if, if, if they say they need, and they originally wanted two, and I think Mr. Noble's moving a used one to...
We've got a used one at the Fire Department that we're moving over to one of these two buildings, and then the other machine, depending on whether we need color and party ways or not, we'll move the upstairs color machine over there. If we don't, we leave the black and white one over there, but either way, I've got it covered.
Okay. Coffee machines aren't optional, I mean, I'm on one, I'm on all the...
I understand they need one to do their work. All right. And I'll be acceptable of it.
Mr. Gaspar, are you comfortable with this?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Fire chief was just, these next articles are all the fire chief, you were here for that presentation, the ambulance laptops, the tough stuff, that's not tough enough, those?
Are you comfortable with it? The chief just discussed, would you?
Yes.
Motion to approve all four articles.
Okay. One, two, three, four. Okay. Tanker one repair, yep, all of those that were just presented to us. And this was a five, tanker one repair was a $5,000 number. The spreadsheet I have doesn't have a number on it.
And Mr. Noble, the $25,000, will it become another capital?
Capital expense.
Solar, solar...
Right now, there's 27,000, 28,000 in there? Without this year's.
Okay, moving on to the Highway Department, and again, these, Mr. DeRoche, $80,000.
So the second solar farm, we were only, we were generating $30,000 with the two one on Main Street, over by the old henhouse? You're not familiar with that, but down on North Main Street?
We have two, and it's about 30,000.
And now the new one on Wing Lane is come, Wing Lane has come online?
Yeah, so between the two of them, the estimate is about 35,000, 36,000 between the two, that we, that we get to move into the capital expense fund every year, or at least...
So is it only 35 for two of them now, or is it 30, 70 for two?
No, 36 for both of them, combined. Is the, is the...
Annual?
Yes.
That's it?
Yeah, the estimate from the assessors.
Plus there's the balance in there now.
I know, but when we brought the first one online, it was generating like 30 grand.
The value goes down.
Yeah, I know, I just...
Because of depreciation schedule?
There's been five, yes, it's, it's been online, it's probably, yes, the selectmen won, I was with me on the board, and we did that, so it's been a...
So you only have like a seven to nine-year depreciation schedule on that one?
Okay.
Okay, moving on, Highway Department requests, were you here for these, Mr. Gaspar?
I was not, but I do understand the lift gate, and I do understand the Mohawk lift, which is a lift for them to do their own repairs.
I'm comfortable with both of these, if you are as well.
And I was also familiar from watching it on, on the YouTube video.
Are we comfortable supporting these two articles, everyone?
Motion to approve Highway Department Mohawk lift and lift gate.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We can keep it casual, I think, I don't think we need those necessarily. Police mobile computers, $50,000, and this, as I understand it, we're buying police cars that are energy efficient, so they probably shut down when you come to a complete stop, and the existing computers don't work in that environment, because the existing computers require a constant power stream, and...
How much, how many new cars do we have that are EV?
There are going to be two hybrids coming online this coming year.
So each computer's 25 grand?
No, they're going to replace the entire fleet with the acceptable computers.
Oh, and they'll run in the other ones, but the new, the new computers are just upgradable to EV units?
Correct.
Okay.
And my understanding is, we could defer this a year, but it would be mandatory next year. It's optional this year, it would be mandatory next year to do this, because we're going to have enough cars in the fleet that we need to upgrade all of them.
Okay.
Comfortable with this article, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Yes, thank you. The speed limit signs, the chief was, were re-tagging all the streets in the Village area at 25 miles an hour. The chief did a presentation on that. I think we might have endorsed that when he came in, didn't we?
Yeah, kind of, sort of, so, I mean, can I speak to this real quick? The chief came in, he gave us a report, Mr. Noble can give you the report, I guess there's like 10,000 cars that passed through this intersection, and it wasn't a day or a week or something crazy.
18,000.
In a day or a week, though, I mean, it was incredible, no, like this corner, and then Slogan Road was like, it was a good decline, but it was still a lot of traffic, so I believe what we're doing, Mr. Noble, I believe what these speed signs are doing is for all the side streets, because people are cutting through the side streets, and we've got a lot of speeding complaints, so now we're able to post speed limits, because there's no posted speed limit, so police officers have a difficult time writing a ticket if it's not posted for speed.
Okay, I apologize, you're almost there. The roads are rated, and most of the roads are posted, and whether they're not or not, you have the default speed limit, which I...
That nobody knows about.
That nobody remembers, because I can't remember what he said. So the proposal from the police chief is to use the ability of the board of selectmen to post a road at 25 miles an hour, so all the village roads here would go to 25, and then we would post every single one of them as 57 signs. And so the $7,500 is the 57 signs, and then, of course, it would need a vote of the board of selectmen by street to drop the speed limit to 25.
I think we did that, didn't we?
We did it on James.
Just on, no, I thought we, when the chief came in, I thought we voted on that.
So he gave us a packet of all the streets that were designated, and the reason why there's 50-something streets, but he wants 50-something signs, more signs, like there's like, there's more signs than what there are streets, and the reason why is there's some streets that intersect that street, and you would have to post in both directions. That was, it was, all we had, by a few signs, it wasn't a big deal, so...
Okay. Are we comfortable with this article?
As much as I hate to, yeah, I mean, second, you have to, you have to control these crazies.
Town Hall roof repair for $30,000, not optional, in my opinion. We've got an old building here with a leaky roof, we can't choose not to repair the roof.
It's not the whole roof, it's a section of the roof.
Whatever, whatever it takes, we got to, we got to fix it, right? We don't, we don't let the roof leak when the roof's leaking in a building like this. Motion to support the articles? Second, all in, everybody, yes, all right. Water Division Utility Truck, this is replacing a very old vehicle, as best I remember, and this is a...
Yeah, it was like a 2003 or something.
No, it's like a 1993 or something like that, the truck will replace it. It's a very old truck. Mr. Manad, Mr. Manad came in last year, and he wanted the $60,000, it might have been 55, but you know, the cost of everything goes up, and he wanted the truck, but we were purchasing the skid steer from the Water Department, and the board was concerned, again, of minimizing, deducting so much out of the surplus account. And we have a good resource of surplus account for water, but we're supposed to be doing infrastructure, so we really don't. So we held off on the water truck, because we were buying a skid steer out of water surplus. So instead of taking like 120 out of water surplus, we took 50 grand to buy these, 55 to buy the skid steer, so the mini Vaco, skid steer, that type thing, so we can get away, we're doing some work with the attachments on it, and so, there it is, again, it's back in front of us, you know, I think if you went down to the town garage on Saturday, you'd see a park there all by its lonesome little self, I think that we do get something out of it, but it's, it's pretty much on its last leg, so...
A motion to approve.
Second.
Well, can I pick up? This is one we liked.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
It's, is that $13,000?
Yes, because there's still money left over in the past article.
Yeah, Mr. Heard said something about there was money left over from the previous time that we've done it, so you know a bulky item, we've discussed it.
Right, right, but then in your budget, $20,000 for it? So you're saying there's money left over?
It's reduced, but there's money left over from prior bulky items. It's reduced, but there's money left over from prior bulky items.
Yeah, and so what it, what it does is it just allows, and I think that the board needs to have further discussion on that before we, before we go out and advertise the bulky item pickup, we do, we're doing it because, quite honestly, when people look at what they're paying in taxes, it's, you know, what am I getting, right? So this is the one time that we get to give a benefit and say, you know, we're going to pick up your stuff, your bulky items, your big TVs or your bureaus or whatever the heck it is, but I think we need to put a limit on the bulky items, the amount of bulky items. What we, the conversation that was entered by Mr. Menad was, you've got to be careful because we could exceed that 20 grand pretty quickly because you'll get families bringing stuff from out of town and placing it on their relatives' curbs, I, I agree with that, the last time we did it, I seen a lot of that, like certain yards were just really packed with 30, 40 things, so I think moving forward, the, the good idea for the board was, is to limit it up to five bulky items per household, so you don't have that big thing going in and we don't exceed our expense ratio.
Understood.
Voting machines for the town clerk?
Well, they worked fine yesterday.
One man's perspective, a motion to approve the bulky items. Motion to get most of the bulk item.
Second. The voting machines, we've discussed.
Yeah, comfortable, the voting machine, yes?
Yes.
Although I heard they're not broken, don't fix them, okay. The highway, I think is $200,000 now rather than 250, what do we?
Well, based on the amount of money that we have, it's sort of slowing down a little bit, so my recommendation at this moment, I'd really like to do the 250, but I got it to 220, and we may be able to go back when we figure out what the, the police contract comes in, so I'm gonna.
So you want to just leave it, open ended either 200 or 250, we don't know yet. This contract's a negotiation, we don't know where we're going to end.
We don't know where we're going to.
So ratification.
Some of this is, we're beginning to, because I got a million 136,000, and so at some point we're going to run out of money, so, I, I've got this jiggered at the moment with estimates, and I would say at the moment, I've got it penciled in at 220, that may be able to change when we can nail down more firmly the contract number.
So you want us to split this at what level?
At least 220, and then I want you to order me to change that when you get the opportunity.
Gentlemen, comfortable at 220,000 dollars?
That's how we balance a budget, and that's how we're going to balance the budget, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's $30,000, it's 220 more than what we did before for chapter 90, complement chapter, so, do you understand which?
We pulled it all out of the highway.
Chapter 90, we got 35,000, we talked about using more of XI's tax from 1 million to 1.2.
Correct.
Because we've been conservative with XI, so we're saying that we're going to take a little bit extra, I mean, you could say it's coming from that pool, whatever, but we're going to take that money from XI, up XI to 1.2 or 1.2.
School committee's up, school department's up.
That's what we're going to do, it'll complement, we'll get more of those priorities.
Okay, can I share that with you?
You can, please.
Mr. Chairman?
The motion to approve that.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Just one sheet or two sheets?
These are the priorities.
This is, the school department has submitted what their ranking for priorities is, so we can take that into consideration as we go forward.
So this is, the rank would be pri, I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral, why don't you take this? And no, I mean, you want to introduce Kristen Flynn from the school department?
Yeah, Mrs. Flynn, school business manager from the Christian Public School System, did you want to talk on any of these, or?
No, we've done that already. Yeah, I think when we presented them a couple weeks ago, we talked about each one, but I'm here in case you have any questions, if we need to bring Mr. Deroche up to speed on any of them, I'll certainly, you know, take any questions. What's changed since we met, I believe, is that we've prioritized them, so that was one thing that came of our meeting, that it would be good for us to prioritize, to communicate to you all what is the most important ones to us.
So this, this totals, this totals $460,000, how much do we have that we could fund this with?
Well, I can tell you by item rather than by.
And I know we got, still we got other stuff coming up as well that affects all.
I, I think we can do the adoption round, I think we can do some of the parking lot repair, about $20,000 worth, I, I think we could find another way to do the gymnasium door replacement, I don't, yeah, it's there.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Noble, you'll see that there's three number threes, and the reason why that is because the AC, the server room with the air conditioning and the gym door replacement, we think that we can do that another way, but both of those need to be done, so we wanted to keep them a high priority.
So, can, my, my, I'm sorry.
Don't ask me that.
Can I just ask a question, a general question of, of the school, what is your overall budget up year over year?
Year over year, it's gone from level funded, it has decreased, it's gone up about 1%, it's gone up 2%, sometimes it's gone up 3%, so it's really.
From last year to this year?
From last year to this year.
Dollar wise, how much is the budget up? 300, 500s?
Dollar wise, it's about, I have to check that for you, but it's a 3.585% increase from what the school committee voted, however, the difference between what is being recommended is a 3.2% increase in the operating budget.
So Julie, do you have any number? Year over year, is it 500,000?
It's not, let me just get that.
60% of it was tuition to, most of it was tuition to high schools.
Yes, we got a breakdown actually in the budget, I noticed, which is good, gives all the expenses and tuition to high schools, I don't think we've seen that too many times.
No, we had, it was a great presentation at the school department. Where can we, I mean, do we, you know, in a perfect world, we would do all this, do we have?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting, as much as I understand the, I'm suggesting we cannot do the gymnasium cafeteria wall, I think it needs to be done, but I don't think we can do it this year.
At 80,000 dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
The roof preventative maintenance is an issue for us, but we funded that, and so what I'm recommending is merely replacing what they have spent, so that's 15,000.
Does 500 and 2,000 dollars sound familiar? Does 500 and 2,335 dollars sound familiar in an increase year over year?
Well, if I don't count, I know you're probably looking at the full budget, the last two items are the, the debt, so if I take those out, because that's really not part of the school's budget, it gets included in there, but it's really just debt, if I look at the sum of everything else, it's a 455,000 dollar difference.
Okay, because even, that was included last year though, wasn't it? So I'm just doing a some easy subtraction, fiscal year 20, from 19, and I got a 500,000, 500 and 2,000 dollar difference increase. I'm just trying to figure out, we are, we're limited to how much cash we have to balance a budget.
Yeah.
And if we're looking at an increase in a budget of 500, do, can we afford to spend 400,000 on articles for the school department when we're increasing a budget by half a million dollars, where, I don't know where all this money's coming from or how we sustain that rate of growth, so I'm just concerned about that with the 500,000 dollars, and it looks to me, when I did that math, the, the bond and principal and interest was included last year as well, so the number's 500 and 2,000 dollars, so I'm just, of that 502, is it, is it mostly tuition to high school, tuition that, that increase is absorbed off?
Most of the increases are tuitions to high schools, we have more students attending high schools, attending our high schools next year, it was a result of more students coming out of the eighth grade this year than last year, we had a very small class last year, so we've got about 24, 25 more students predicted at 10,000 dollars.
I was going to say, there's a quarter of a month locked right there.
Right, right, so at our, at our presentation, a lot of what we talked about was that, not only that, we had some students moving into the district from, from other towns, other cities and towns, we faced some new move-ins, so that added to it.
Yeah.
We also had students that changed their mind, that were attending Old Colony, that decided to attend Fairhaven High School, for example, or students that were attending Bishop's Stang, they decided to attend Fairhaven High, so when that happens, that hits the school budget, because as you, as you know, the Old Colony tuition, so to speak, is not in the school budget, so any student that attends Old Colony is not, their tuition is not in the school department budget. So if they change their minds, oftentimes we don't know that until after the fact, so that's what happened this year. We saw that between new move-ins over the summer and between students that changed their mind from OC or Bishop's Stang, it was about 10, 11 students, so there's another 100,000, so it really was, you know, the perfect spot that hit us this year, and of course now, those students become part of the base for next year unless they were, unless they're graduating seniors.
So you're really looking at about 35 students difference from last year to this year, just based, because I remember we always talked about the movement of students, and you guys keep a buffer for that reason, you usually have a little bit of money?
We do not, we do not.
You know what I mean?
Years ago, we were able to do that, but as the budgets have increased, in order to stay within reasonableness, reason, we have not kept a buffer.
Yeah.
And that's, that harmed us this year, because had we had a buffer, we would have, you know, and this is affecting our budget this year as well, because now the kids are at the high school, we get the bill, this year we have to pay for them, and then we also have to budget for them.
Just summarize some of what happened at your presentation, I mean, the, you know, the one thing that, that jumped out at me from the presentation, we looked at a dollar increase in the school department's budget, and, and my best memory, two-thirds of that increase, the two-thirds of that dollar increase were an increase in our headcount going to Fairhaven High School, the Bedford High School, Bristol Aggie, whatever the schools are, it was a tuition increase that we don't control at all.
So when we presented to you, our increase was 509,385, and that's the 3.585% increase, so right now you're looking at a 3.2%, so the, the dollars aren't going to match up because you're looking at the recommended budget, we're still working on the budget that was voted by the school committee, but as Mr. Cabral said, of that 509,000 increases in tuition, which was high school, school choice, and out of district tuition accounted for 289,000 of that 509.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
So that's a lot, and then the other part.
Absolutely, 60% of your budget, the increase in the budget's gone just from a shift in.
And the other, and the other thing, I think you did, you did a nice, you did a nice job on it, you know, we can look at the budget this year and look at the percentage change this year, but I think you did a presentation on what your budget change has been over 10 years, and, and what that showed is that, you know, while the jump may be perceived as somewhat dramatic this year, that there were other, there were other years over that, I'm going to say 10-year period, it might not have been that long, where the changes were not that as dramatic, so if you look at the, you look at the 10-year picture and the average over that 10-year picture, we're, we're dealing with a year where it's jumping fairly substantially, but that's not the norm, and it's been, it's been more stable and more controlled, to pick a word, over, over that longer period of time, so.
So, so like you said, Mr. Cabral, in some years in FY 11, it was a level funded budget, FY 12 it went down by 0.36%, FY 13 it went up by 0.18%, so not a lot of, not a lot of gains at all, 14 was 2.38%, 15 was 3.62%, 16 was 2.38%, 17 was 0.72%, 18 was 3.18%, 19 was 2.49%, so I think that's fairly reasonable.
Do you have an average?
Over the town here, I don't have an average right now.
All that good stuff and you just.
No, no, yes, I know.
All right, it's good, but it's, but it's not, it's not as extreme as the current.
Okay, so we go back to the articles, curriculum, you have a, the school committee and management has, has prioritized articles in case we need money, right?
Right, I would, I was at the presentation, my understanding, this, this curriculum article is not optional, the school department believes that this is extremely important, and this is their number one priority.
This is our number one priority, and if this were not in an article, it would be in our operating budget.
Probably should be in the budget, but that's, we don't need, we don't need to go there, but it's, but it is their number one priority.
Can you just give us a quick hit on what curriculum is, please?
So curriculum is, is, is the guidelines on how the students learn, right? It helps, it helps guide, it's matched up with the state standards, and so it gives the teachers a map of what to teach, it ensures that every student is being taught according to what the state is requiring. It also, in time, will ensure that as students go from first grade to second grade to third grade and so on, that it's continuous, that there's alignment between each grade, and that all students in first grade are learning the same thing, so that then when they get to second grade, they all have the same base of knowledge, and so on and so forth, it goes on.
That's not, that's not something that schools do already though, I mean, you advance kids with?
It is, however, you need to keep up to date with the standards, sometimes the standards change from the state, you need to keep up to date, and for example, this year, what we're asking for, for the 50,000 is for the math curriculum, right now we have a digital program, and that's expiring at the end of this school year, so as of the end of this school year, we will have nothing, so it's not like, when we all went to school, we had a book, and in fact, when I started working at the school department, probably some of the same books that the kids were using, I had used many years before, so it's an expensive proposition, but it's something that's needed to keep up with, especially in light of the state standards, the increase in, in what's asked of our students and our teachers, and it's a guideline to help everybody achieve what, what they can achieve.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I, in, in my opinion, this one, this one, the school department's made the number one priority, I think, I think we need to support this article at the 50,000 dollar level.
I actually agree that it should be in the budget, it should be in your budget. It's, it's every year, right?
Well, we will be, every year we will need to update something, that is correct.
But at this 50,000.
Okay, so this is like a startup.
But it's not, but it's not in our, it's not in our current budget, so next year at this time, we will be coming back to ask for something, some more for curriculum, whether it's in the operating budget or whether it's in the warrant articles.
But it won't be at that same high expense, the 50,000 startup, let's call it a startup expense, right?
Well, I don't know, because this is for math, so remember we have ELA, we have social studies, we have science, so it really all depends, right now our teachers and our principals are looking at different programs for the math programs, deciding what's best, so perhaps we won't need the whole 50,000, but we may, you know, we don't, at this point in time, we want to make sure we have enough to do what we need to do.
And it'll roll over if you don't use it, if it's in an article too, so, could I get a motion on this article?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Parking lot maintenance repair.
I thought it was upgrade burglar alarm, she's going to prioritize that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking back to the original list, I'm sorry, so upgrade burglar alarm, $35,000.
So what's happening with the burglar alarm? It's working, but it is old, it's, it's the time of the building renovation, which was what, 17, 18 years ago, so we're finding that the components of it are very hard to replace, some of them we can't replace, some of the panels are not working, the, the alarm is working for sure because we get, we do get the calls at 10, 11 o'clock at night, I've received them, so we know it's working, but.
That's what you get for living close by.
That's correct, that's correct.
The other, so we, did we do a surveillance system?
We did, that's the camera system.
So that's not part of the?
No, this is the, the alarm, so when we come in, the first person in during the day unlocks the alarm, the last person who leaves sets.
It's also important to do it at the same time you're doing the fire alarm, because you're going to be wiring anyway, you might as well do the double duty.
So the numbers, are there two numbers, or is it one, there's a fire alarm below it?
No, it's just cameras, just cameras.
Well, I can update fire alarm down below as a six.
Right.
So burglar alarm is more important than?
When we were looking at it, we talked about it yesterday with our technology director and our facilities director and superintendent, we felt that the more pressing, if we had to say, was the burglar alarm, we could get by with the fire alarm, I, I understand it's a bit of a nuisance to the fire department with some of, some of it, but it is functioning, so, you know, we have it tested, it's functioning, but it will be time to replace it sometime in the future, it's not as pressing a need as others, that's why it's further down.
So you seem to feel I should do both at the same time?
I can, I can, I've got it in my recommendations, you can do both.
Because it's more efficient to do them both?
I think it is, plus I don't, especially when it comes to the fire alarm, I don't want to impact my insurance.
The fire alarm is really, most of it is tied up in the smoke detectors, we need about 370 detectors between the two buildings, and they're about $100 each, and then it's estimated three, three days of labor, so that's where we got the 40, the 40,000 from, so, so the fire alarm is more the, replacing all the detectors and the labor to do it.
And they're 17 years old?
Mm-hmm.
Just the 370 detectors is 37 grand.
Correct, right, so we estimated what, 3,000 for labor?
We should probably get on a better schedule of replacing our fire, what are we doing, fire detectors, where maybe we just do, you know, 25 a year and, like we do water meters, we have a plan.
So that's something we can certainly look into, you know, in the past, we haven't really asked for anything through the capital articles, but now that that's, you know, open to us and encouraged, that's why we're, and the buildings are getting older, for many years we had the luxury of having new buildings, and now all of a sudden they're old. Well, the building was renovated, what, 2002?
So these, these things are like 15, 20 years old?
Right, yeah.
I mean, you think it's going to be cheaper because of wiring issues? Are they hotwired, are these fire detectors?
Oh, yeah.
Not all of them, it's code, for the school it must be, right, hotwired or not?
It's got a cheap battery.
Battery operated?
No batteries.
I know it's code for neoboyers and things of that nature, has to be hotwired in?
All right, so the, the request is, the request to do both of them?
75.
Is 75, although the fire alarm's down the bottom.
I had 45 for fire and 35 for burglar originally.
She has 40 and 35.
So we can take that down five grand if you're comfortable. Your number changed from what you gave me earlier, you gave me 45 and 35?
I think, yeah, I think we had estimated earlier because we didn't have the price back from the person we looked to for the fire alarm system, so that's, you know, the, the $100 each is, is pretty, pretty firm as well as the labor, so.
So I can take that article from 80 to 75?
Okay.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, any feelings on this, any motions, any?
I mean, it has to be done, you don't screw around with burglar alarms, you don't screw around with fire detectors, I mean.
Motion to support it then.
Second.
Thank you.
I am.
Parking lot repair, 50,000, that's not your next one, AC, AES server room AC?
Yeah, that's a, I'm going to recommend instead of the 8,000 that I have on my request list, that we fund that at 6,000, because we did send two people to HVAC school, and I'd like to try to do this with our in-house labor, and that would save us some money.
So this is computer, our computer room where we keep all the?
It's not only where the schools keep all their stuff, but that's my backup for town, so, we're not going to mess with this one.
And keep it going, so we've got to do this one.
So one way or the other, it has to, it's going to get done.
8,000 to 6,000, what's the magic number?
6,000.
That one's six?
Gentlemen, comfortable with that?
I am.
You don't have much hope.
No.
Second.
All right, park, what's next, no, the, HVAC? Gymnasium door replacement.
So there's a door at the Ford Middle School gym that leads to the outside, and it needs to be replaced, it's something that the building inspector has looked at and has advised as that we need to replace it.
Did it work yesterday, Mr. Deroche?
They weren't just fine.
Perfectly fine yesterday?
That was the elementary school.
Oh, yeah, that's right, there was.
Elementary school.
I've got, I've got this on a situation where I think we can do this with in-house labor, cheaper than $8,000, and in addition, I think in working with Mrs. Flynn, we might be able to find another source of funding for this, so I'm right at the moment carrying this at zero, but I can defer, I mean, we just say 5 grand on the other articles.
This is an exterior door?
Yes.
Is it locked, is it used?
It is, it leads out, if you're in the Ford Middle School gym, it leads out to, to the back, obviously, and it's just, there's a crash bar, you know, the other, near the the crash bar, near the dumpster, out by the softball field. It's a door directly, I believe directly from the gym, leading out.
High usage, or no usage, or emergency?
Well, it's, it's probably an emergency exit, and that's likely why the building inspector, I can't speak to why, but I know when he did his pre-school opening inspection, that was one of the items that he said we need to look at and get that addressed. And we did get a quote from a, a door company, and that's where the eight thousand dollars came from.
I spoke to Jim, and Jim thinks he can bring it in for a lot less.
I think so. I've never seen an eight thousand dollar door.
I, I understand the whole door has to be replaced, and I don't know if any, you know, any...
That's a better way to do it, anyway.
The crash bar and all that, so, it's, it's not a door like that, another word, or, you know, or a kitchen door.
We'll find it, we'll fix it.
All right, Mr. Noble thinks we can, we can do this ourselves without expending town funds, so...
Well, we'll find a source of funds, even if I have to do my transfer, but I wanna do that.
So we will, will...
I wanna do that door, not as an article, I want, even if I have to do it as a transfer, I wanna get that door done before the end of school and before even town meeting.
Okay. So I'm putting an X on that one, we'll not advance, we'll not advance that article. Parking lot maintenance and repair, fifty thousand dollars?
Are we doing, are we doing...
I'm sorry, I'm jumpy back, I'm sorry. Gymnasium cafe wall, eighty thousand dollars.
So that's the divider that separates the cafeteria from the gym. Again, it's something that was original to the building renovation, and right now, the, the door, it doesn't open or lock properly, so it's a, it's a manual open and close, and it's currently pinned. It's, it, it needs to be replaced. It's, it's one of our more important items, but it's also a very expensive item as well. So this will be replaced with electronic controls that will allow it to open and close with, with pushing a button, rather than with manual exertion from somebody.
Is this opening daily? How often?
Um, it's, it's usually in the closed position, right, to separate the caf and the gym, but we would open it for, say, town meeting, we would open it for performances in the cafeteria, we would open it up to have a larger expected crowd. So it's not opening and closing every day, certainly, but it does get used throughout the year.
It does open and close, though. You can't open it, it's not like, it's broken and we can't open it.
It does, it does, right, but it just is not working properly. So this is definitely something that we need to address, you know, sooner, but since it's, I think we have it as, you know, number three, it's not the highest thing that we need to do, but it's certainly something that we need to really keep in mind.
Can I, can I ask a question? So you, you mentioned that this new door's electronic. Why do we have to put electronic on it? Why can't we make it a manual like it is now? We just push it out of the way?
We had both priced out. The manual one was sixty thousand, which is twenty thousand dollars less, but this one will be better working. It won't, we won't have our staff exert it, perhaps less chance for workers' compensation injuries.
It's a big door, it's a big wall.
It's a big, it's, I mean, it spans the width.
I know which wall it is. Probably the same one that was there when I went to school.
I don't know, this was fifteen years ago, so...
So it's like that big accordion wall that went across?
Yes, and looking at it, it's not, you know, this is not the most important reason for, for asking for this, but it's, it's ripped, it's torn, it's, it's dirty-looking, so it's not the best show of our, of our school as well.
And there's no way to repair this wall?
The repairs would, would cost just almost as much as, as replacing the whole thing, because we did look at that as well. And given the, the aesthetics of it as well, it's kind of unfortunately beyond that.
I'm just, the, the electronic side kinda scares me for a while, it's not older enough that much, just because when those things fail, it's more money to repair.
Yeah. Feelings on this one, gentlemen?
I...
I'm struggling with this one a little bit. I'm, I'm, you know, as I, as I look ahead at things you prioritize, I look at, you know, the next item, for example, technology, excuse me, Mr. Gaspard. Technology equipment refresh just strikes me as something that, in my mind, and I know just, just feels like something that would be, I'd wanna do that one before I replace the wall, I suppose.
Correct, so, so you're right. I think, I think the issue with the door is the sheer cost of it as well. It's, it's a lot of money, but it's a big door, and it is something that we will have to do. If we don't do it this year, we'll have to consider it for next year.
We'll be flush next year, though, so.
No, no.
She says no.
So, but in terms of the, the technology refresh, you're right, that is something that's very important, that a lot of these items that we're looking to, to refresh are and replace are about eight to nine years old. We need to keep up with technology, some of the, you know, replacing everything. So this is something that we would like to come back year after year to do, sort of what you suggested with the, the smoke alarms, would be to, every year, get on a plan of replacing some things. And these would be the projectors that, like, you have there to project, the whiteboards, all, we don't use, you know, traditional chalkboards anymore, everything's a big whiteboard that interacts with the computers, and the teachers can write on it with, right in front of the class, so it's, it's, you know, it's, it's really nice to see in action. You're welcome to come take a look at one, certainly, but of course, they're electronic, and there's always something, you know, that needs to be replaced, or there's always something that is, is, is better. So that's what we're looking to do with this.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Gaspard, you would...
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just confused, because one meaning the most important, correct?
Correct, that is correct. One is number one.
My, my gut is, and I'll be the, I'll be the heavy on this one, I suppose, is, is if we could defer the, I mean, I'd rather, and I know you, I'd rather do the technology, I mean, we, so we moved up the fire alarms, moved up the technol, if we could get another year out of that door, with an understanding that, you know, I, I get, I'm familiar with it, I, I, I think I hung it, like, in two thousand and two, so, I'm familiar with the door. If we could get another year out of it, I think, you know, given the cost of it, that would be the preference, and maybe the technology number's not fifty, the curriculum number's not fifty next year, and there's no burglar alarm, and there's no fire alarm, and with those items gone next year, we'll have, if we have the same money, we've got eighty thousand dollars to replace the door, so I...
So you're trying to make the case that, you're saying that you could actually fund two articles, the next two articles, technology equipment refresh and the driveway repair for seventy-five, if you don't fund the eighty thousand?
Well, I'm even going, no, I'm saying we did the, we did the, you know, we, we moved the fire alarm up, the fire alarm is down here, we moved that up.
Right, but I'm...
I'm saying move the technology equipment refresh up, and for the, for the same dollars of the, of the, instead of doing the eighty thousand, we're moving things up, you know, priority list, and...
Right, that's what I'm trying to say to you. If you're gonna look to fund something, Mr. Cabral, your technology's twenty-five grand, you could almost fund the, replace the roof condensers and the preventative maintenance of the roof, all in one, you could do three articles, if you drop the one eighty thousand dollar article. So you'll actually accomplish three, get three things off the list, if you take one off the list, I think is what Mr. Cabral's alluding to. I mean, to spend three hundred and sixty, four hundred and sixty in articles?
And Mr. Noble, you mentioned that the driveway repair would be twenty K?
I, I'm recommending at this point, I, I've been trying to balance this, and respectfully make sure that we do something every year, but I'm recommending only twenty. You know, we have some flexibility, but I don't have all this money.
Have you priced out the driveway? Have you...
Uh...
What does the fifty do for us?
We had hoped that it would do the back, we started last, with the article last year, we did from Middle Road, down by the superintendent's office and the business office, to where the buses park. Now we wanna come around the corner and go behind the school.
And that's a fifty thousand dollar...
Um, I know that Mr. Menard had looked at it, and he had helped us with that, so I don't know, off the top of my head, if it is fifty or not. But we had wanted, we have, the whole place needs to be done, honestly. So we're just going to do whatever we can with whatever we get each year.
So that's something that's already tarred, right?
Yes.
The, the section you're looking, it says repair, so I'm assuming that it's already tarred, it's not a dirt surface?
Yes. Oh, no, no, no. It's already tarred, it's just, again, old.
So it's all just fallen apart?
Yes.
We did some patches last year, we did some resurfacing last year, we did some seal coating, minor seal coating, we did some crack sealing last year, so we're certainly gonna continue to do maintenance, because it's cheaper than ripping up the whole thing and starting all over again. But I'm recommending at this time only twenty.
I think, I think that if we, if we try to work in conjunction with Mr. Menard, with chapter ninety, when we have companies in doing our roads, maybe, maybe we, while the equipment's in here, we can do that as an additional...
I think that's what we did for the side.
That's what we did last year for the side.
So we can, it'll complement it, maybe save us some money and get more done for that amount of money, so maybe we could play that.
The DPW did the prep work for it, and...
One of the reasons why I'm comfortable saying less.
Yeah, I think we could play around with that and try to coordinate it, so it's all being done at the same, while, instead of them moving their equipment in to do a small thirty thousand dollar job, you're already here, can you take a visit over to the school, and this is what we'll pay you actually to do that amount, and I think we could save some bucks doing it.
All right, so moving just, parking lot maintenance or repair, so...
Who's that?
Gymnasium, we're gonna, suggesting we hold that, we try to hold that for a year. Parking lot maintenance or repair, hearing Mr. Noble, maybe do that at the twenty thousand dollar level, and do the technology equipment refresh at twenty-five thousand?
That sounds good to me.
And what comes after that?
Oh, yeah, number seven, the roof condensers.
And how important is this, well, get some more roof repair and...
Right, so the roof condensers, we've had some repairs to our kitchen equipment, to the refrigerators and freezers over the past year, and the, it was recommended during the repairs that we replace the condensers on the roofs. We have three at the elementary school and two at the middle school, at about ten thousand dollars apiece. So we decided that maybe we would just go forward with the elementary schools, which were more critical. Now, if we don't do this, we may continue to have repairs to our equipment, so we would just have to spend money repairing the equipment, and then eventually repair the condensers on the roof. So it's, again, it's number seven, so it's not critical, but it is something, you know, some of these things, if we can't do them this year, just keep in mind, you'll probably see them next year.
I've got a note of, is that fifteen, doesn't he, is it thirty? What's the number of those?
Thirty.
Thirty, there's three of them.
Ten grand a piece.
We didn't go for the ones at Ford.
And we, you're, you're, um, I think we can do it, having, we've do this once before, you do it now, you're doing it on an emergency basis.
You do it on an emergency basis.
And you don't wanna do it while school is open, so, three at ten each.
So she's talking about just the elementary school.
Just the elementary, we didn't...
How problematic have these condensers been? I know we say we've done some work.
Yeah.
What are the costs of those repairs? Has it been significant, five, seven thousand dollars?
About that, I think, but I think they're probably going to start increasing, according to the company that we had out there, they were the ones that recommended that we look to start replacing the condenser, so...
If you're spending five or seven thousand dollars in repairs, I would have to say that it's probably worth that ten grand to put new ones in each. Probably makes more sense to put new ones in, and get rid of this five or seven thousand dollar problem of the year.
That's correct.
So comfortable with this article at thirty thousand dollars?
I don't think you have much of a choice. The other now, you might be going for reserve fund transfer on the roofs.
Roof preventive maintenance?
What I'm recommending here is, we had passed an article last year for fifty thousand dollars, and they have used some of that article, so I'm recommending just refilling what they used. So instead of fif, twenty-five thousand, I'm recommending fifteen.
Right, we've used about fifteen.
And you've got some money left?
Again, we've had the roofers in here in the past week or so, so it's probably gonna be a little bit more than fifteen, that we end up spending for the end of the year, but, you know...
But you still got thirty-five left over that we didn't, so, okay.
So if we, you wanna fund fifteen, so they have like fifty to go with, for the roof?
Right, so that was the idea, to refill it, and at the time, I knew that we had, it was a little while ago, we hadn't spent all that much, but I knew we had had some, some repairs made that we hadn't received invoices with, so that's, you know, at the time, I said, well, let's comfortably put twenty-five, knowing that we could probably back off on it, by the time we came to town meeting.
This'll be fifteen.
This'll be fifteen. And the HVAC server at nine thousand dollars.
Can we go back to the roof? I'm sorry. Is this the roof thing, it says preventative maintenance, roof? Is this really what we talked about, Kristen, when you came in a couple months ago, about the, let's continue patching it, because the wall that we have on the school will be gone in four or five years or whatever, maybe then we'll do a complete roof?
So what we talked about a couple months ago was, we needed the approval of the Board of Selectment and the school committee to file an application with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to have a roof replacement. The section that needs to be repaired is a section of the elementary school roof, is about sixty-three thousand, so that's what we have up through the MSBA right now, and we won't, we haven't heard whether that's been approved, our project's been approved or not. So, but the other part is, we still have the new section of the elementary school roof, which was with the building renovation, and the entire Ford Middle School roof. Neither one of those have approached the twenty-year mark, and neither one of those are recommended for replacement. We had a roof condition study done in November. So the only thing that was recommended for replacement was that section, the old section of the elementary school roof. However, also, combined with that is the fact that we are, we do have leaks. Anytime we have a big rainstorm, much like your town hall roof, we're chasing leaks. So this fund, this money here, would be to repair leaks as they come up. So that's, that's what we've been doing this year, is at both schools, chasing leaks.
So the sixty-three that we applied with the SBA, that's still hanging out in there, and that would take care of the leaky problem?
That would replace, that would replace the old section of the roof from, I think, I believe it was from nineteen seventy-one, when the elementary school was...
And that's the leaky section?
The, well, yes, but it's, the middle school's also leaking, and the elementary school is leaking too. So this is, the old section is the one that the MSBA will consider, they won't consider anything newer than twenty years old. So we couldn't even, it would be, you know, a waste of time to file an application for the other sections of the, of the roofs, so, but we do have leaks spread throughout.
HVAC server.
So this controls the, all the components of our HVAC system, it's computerized, it's probably, it's our lowest priority. We can, you know, I, I don't wanna, you know, withdraw this, but we can get by another year without it, certainly. This is not a, a priority.
Why would we fund it? I can fund it if you want it. He's saying she can get another year, I think we should get another year.
I mean, it's that...
You can fund it if we want it.
It's an eight-year-old, it's an eight-year-old server. It's an eight-year-old server, I don't, it's up to, it's up to Kristen, certainly.
Well, I mean, if, if you wanna fund it, we'll certainly go forward and do it, but if there's a better use for that, for those funds...
Put the money aside and not spend it.
No, no, no.
We can, stabilization.
Spend it, yeah. Well, no, I mean, put it aside in the article and not fund it necessarily, now, we're getting more time out of it. You could create the article, fund the article, and not spend it.
And not spend it.
It's basically taking that money and kicking it off to the side, so nobody else can spend it, it's under the server, under the school. If the school doesn't spend it on the server, because that'll be the particular use of the nine thousand dollars, it'd just be kicked back. How long can you hold it on it?
Year to year, just in case.
If the school doesn't spend it on the server, because that'll be the particular use of the nine thousand dollars, it'd just be kicked back. How long can you hold it on it?
Year to year, just in case.
If you, if you make it appro- so, Mr. Noble's answering forever. Julie, if, if we make an appropriation, town meeting makes an appropriation for, let's use the nine thousand dollar server. Can that money just hang out in the shadows, as Mr. Noble just said, forever?
Um, it can stay open forever. Every year, at the end of the year, I reach out to all of the departments that have articles open to find out if they've completed the article, if we can close it out. Um, and certainly if there are old ones that haven't been touched, we'll bring it up and, you know, Brian and I will have a discussion on whether we can use them for something or if we should close them out. But essentially, yes, you could leave them open. If the department said, nope, I still need it, keep it open, please, it could stay open for.
How many of those do you have? I've kind of rolled over. Is it easy to generate a report? Can you show us?
Yeah, I can get your report.
Get a report.
Absolutely.
I mean, you always think that you wouldn't want to go any more than twenty-four months, right, on the article? Yeah, I've been using it twenty-four months, and it was that much of a priority twenty-four months ago, and you didn't spend the money, then it's not that much of a priority. Why are you still holding on to the cash?
We have one that's been open for five.
Ridiculous.
Could you just get, give us a report?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the HVAC server, where are we? Do we, do we need it or don't you need it?
I think if you want to put it into the, to the budget, that's fine. If you want to tell them to not spend it until they have it.
Is that a budget?
Can you get another year out of it? How bad is it? How often are you fixing it? Tell them.
Um, we can get another year out of it, sure.
So, let's, 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 let's kill this one.
Oh, that's it. You said it, Kristen.
I know, I know.
School's going to close in June, and server's going to go bye-bye.
I hope not.
School, uh, Article forty-one, Article sixteen, I don't know, this one, special education stabilization.
Are we closing at nine thousand?
No. No, no, we do not.
So, why you brought that whole number down to two fifty-one?
So, um, the specials, uh, it's your number nine, I was talking with Mr. Noble about this. He said, we put a hundred thousand in last year, you used fifty, and the discussion was maybe put that fifty back in?
So, so we haven't used any yet, but going forward to the FY twenty budget, in order to come in at a relatively acceptable level, we planned, we will plan to use fifty thousand for next year. So, we're probably, to pay our tuitions, our special tuitions for next year, we're going to have to dip into, we planned in the budget, we did a, you know, an offset to the expenses of fifty thousand. So, effectively, without refilling it, so to speak, that will leave us with fifty thousand.
But if we refilled it, fifty would refill it and put you back to where you were last year. Do you remember what the stabilization is for the special education?
Yeah, I know what it is. So, you're saying the, okay, go ahead.
We'll read, we'll read. I'll try to do it, I'll try to do it quickly. So, um, we're required to fund the educational costs of a child up to age twenty-one, no matter what those costs are. And we get some reimbursement from the state perhaps eventually. But regardless of what those costs are, we're required. So, if a child comes into the town of Acushnet and has a education program that costs two hundred thousand dollars a year to go to a special school, we're required to fund that. So, they move in tomorrow, that's our bill. So, what we decided to do jointly with the school committee is, because this number can vary so substantially year to year, is create a reserve account of funds for when that happens. Because the costs can swing so dramatically year to year, let's reserve some funds for when one of those swings happens.
Okay.
So, it's not a surprise, so it's not a budget buster. Um, and so, we created that last year at the hundred thousand dollar level. They're using fifty of that this year to balance their, to fund their special education budget. So, if we put another fifty in, it'll get them back to where they are. It's a reserve, it's insurance, it's budget stabilization.
And I believe, um, in order to take funds out, it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. So, it's not something that we just do.
It's prudent budgeting.
Well, certainly. Did we vote that fifty thousand, or is that something that you're seeing and coming in the upcoming future?
So, last year you voted a hundred thousand.
I know, but you have not.
So, we have not, because we haven't spent it yet, right? So, but we're planning to spend it, but who knows, maybe next year, we have some kids move out, and we don't need to rely on that. We can stay within what we have without using the fifty thousand. But if, if the picture that we have today of all our special education costs holds true for next year, and actually, it's already changed, it changed since we talked with you, and just this past week, we were notified of yet another student moving into Acushnet sometime in the fall, that is in an out-of-district placement. And that placement is sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Plus, we need to get the student to the, to their program. So, usually on a van, we don't have any other students going to that particular program. So, it's not like we can put him or her on in a van we already have going. So, to get another van out there, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a day, round trip. So, it's that one person moving in.
So, we reserve.
In change, so, hence, as Mr. Cabral said, you know, as quickly as in one week, in the past few weeks, we had two students move in, one student move out, another student move in. So, it's, it's not predictable. Um, certainly, we try our best, we look at who we have, but we have no idea when somebody's going to move into Acushnet.
Right, and those costs differentiate from one student to another. I mean, one could be thirty, or twenty, and one could be two hundred.
Depends on their needs, as Mr. Cabral said, there could be a student whose, whose plan requires that he or she attend a private residential school. And those are upwards of a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars.
So, I do, the suggestion is we support this at the fifty thousand dollar level, to get you back to where you were a year ago, and.
I approve that. Second.
Uh, and school committees all set, school departments all set.
Well, thank you very much, we certainly appreciate it, you know, these are things that we identified that we, that we needed sometime in the future. And we, we really appreciate the support of, you know, trying to, to get us just about everything that we've asked for. So, thank you very much, and welcome, Mr. DeRoche, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
If you would like, just give us a call, and the superintendent and I would be happy to, you know, show you around the schools or talk, if you have any questions about the school department, so.
Well, you'll hear from me.
Okay, very good.
Very interested in doing that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Article seventeen is an authorization to enter into a pilot agreement. I think this relates to the people that came in.
No.
No, what is this then?
This is, um, and I'm going to need Kevin here to make sure that I do this correctly. But a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay.
So, for the solar farms that come in, the depreciation schedule has been monkeyed around with by the IRS and the state of Massachusetts so that you can actually depreciate the solar field in a very short period of time, somewhere between seven and nine years now. They don't like that, primarily because it doesn't allow them to forecast a revenue stream that's acceptable. So, they can, by state law, enter into a pilot plan with the town. The selectmen negotiate with them, and they can stretch out a pilot plan for as much as twenty years. The net difference is predictable, meaning, in other words, the depreciation schedule of seven or nine years, and that could change by state law, so they could reset it again. But if you enter into a pilot, you're entering into a pilot that predicts the revenue stream from that solar farm for twenty years, or ten years, or fifteen, whatever the board decides to make it. And this gives the power to the Board of Selectmen. Short of giving the power to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would negotiate a pilot for each single solar farm, and then have to take that individual pilot agreement to town meeting every time. So, I'm asking for the town meeting to give authority to the Board of Selectmen to do pilots at its discretion.
Is there one on the table? Is there a new farm on the table?
There is, uh, Curzars Energy is doing the project at Cutinos, and they're asking for a pilot. And, and I think that's certainly something I think the town would certainly consider doing, or at least the selectmen should consider doing. And of course, it doesn't mess with the solar revenue fund, because that money would still go into the solar revenue fund. However, this would be a way of leveling the payments.
So, this gives us flexibility.
Flexibility. Now, there's a hitch to this, by the way. It's being debated by the lawyer and give you blanket authority to do this, or whether you'll have to take every single one. So, I wrote it, I've written it in the most optimistic way. So, we may get this thrown out by town council, and they'll say, nope, sorry, you got to come in with each one.
Okay, but this seems like a good idea, it can't, it can't hurt us, and when a, when a solar farm comes in. We'll be able to negotiate, we'll be able to negotiate with them at that point, rather than going to town meeting.
Um, I'm unfamiliar with the project you're talking about. Uh, you said behind Cutinos, but.
It's on Cutinos property.
But where is that?
Corner of Middle Road, the shop corner on Middle Road right before Lynn Street, it used to be the, um, Pine Hill Pavilion?
Yeah, Pine Hill.
Oh, setback.
Oh, you remember that, huh?
Yeah. So, like a buzzer golf course.
I don't know, is your name a zachus, is it?
It's where we just approved the soil permit, five eighty-eight Middle Road.
Okay, but we're not approving, we're not approving that project in any way. We're approving the option to.
The option for the Board of Selectmen to do a pilot if the board so desires.
But the, the.
Anything about it.
The pilot program, so explain, so, I mean, I think it's important to explain it so that we understand. If, if a solar farm, let's just use the proposed solar farm for five eighty-eight Middle Road comes in, it's going to bring in revenue in the first year of ten thousand dollars. It's got a depreciation now, how does the depreciation scale work now? And what is it, what are we, what are they going to be paying in twenty years versus, you obviously know that the ten thousand dollars would be five hundred dollars a year for twenty years, right, ten thousand dollars? So, you're only getting five hundred bucks a year, instead of getting your money upfront, your ten thousand dollars upfront, you're just dispersing that over twenty years, taking whatever that is. But I don't, I don't see what's, why the town residents or the board would even entertain a pilot program for something that's not driving economic development and jobs in the community? Why would you offer a subsidy to people that are already getting government subsidies?
It's not a subsidy, you're still going to get the, the money.
I understand, you're subsidizing it and letting them pay it over twenty years instead of paying up all the money upfront, why, what, where's the gain?
Because you would expand the tax levy limit by a dramatic amount in the first year, and it wouldn't go down. Remember, you wanted to move the money from the, into the special revenue account, the, and not count it against the levy limit? Well, if you taxed, uh, let's say you, this thing, you're going to get taxed at a quarter of a million dollars. That raises your levy limit. The next year, instead of paying a quarter of a million dollars, they pay two hundred and twenty thousand. Well, that thirty thousand's still in the levy limit. Then you, next year after that, you're down to two hundred thousand, that fifty thousand's still in the levy limit. So, the, the benefit to the taxpayer or to the town is a predictable revenue stream without increasing the levy.
And this, we're asking for approval to make a decision in the future, correct?
Sorry?
Are we, I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral, cut it.
No, no.
Uh, we're increasing the levy, you're just not doing it as dramatic. I don't want to see how you're not increasing the levy.
You would increase the levy.
But you are, if you don't do it.
Let's say you do a twenty-year deal, and you say you're going to collect fifty grand a year. The levy limit only rises by fifty thousand. If you say to the, this, this solar farm, you're going to do, um, tax proper, um, ad valorem tax. You'd say the first year's tax, the value of your property means your tax is going to be two hundred and fifty thousand. The levy rises by two hundred and fifty. They depreciate, because it's a depreciable asset, the next year, it's only worth two hundred and twenty, the year after that, it's two hundred. But your levy limit's already been increased by the quarter of a million. So, that levy limit finds a new home.
And we could choose to say no, that we're not going to give you a pilot.
Yes, you might do that.
We could choose to say we don't want to do it.
So, what you're saying is, I'm trying to understand it a little bit better, because I was just thinking that it's for tax collection reasons. But you're saying, if the value of the property's a quarter of a million dollars in year one, that levy limit goes up now and adds that quarter of a million dollars. So, what, what are you saying, that instead of you increasing that quarter of a million dollars in year one, you take that quarter of a million dollars, divide it over twenty years, and that's all the levy limit increases?
Correct. Plus, here's the better part, especially on solar farms, they have changed the taxable value of solar farms fourteen times in ten years. So, if you enter into a pilot, no matter what the legislature does, your deal stays firm.
Yeah, I'd have to, um, I'd have.
I'm only actually asking for the authority from town meeting to give the Board of Selectmen another arrow in the quiver.
And we don't.
I'm not saying I do. I kind of like it the way it just explained it, I just want to make sure that it's.
I think you'll like it.
We could say no.
Every town in the common. Well, it works out well, but it works out well by now. I'm raising the levy limit, right, it's less taxes, actually. You're increasing the levy limit by less somehow.
Correct.
So, you're saying, let's use two hundred thousand dollars, easy math. You're saying now, in the first year, we're only going to value you at twenty thousand dollars, because it's over, I'm sorry. Two hundred thousand dollars, twenty years, is four thousand dollars a year, right?
If we're using that number yet.
So, that's all you're saying, the levy limit would grow is the.
It's controlling the levy limit, and it's predicting your revenue stream, and they get to predict their revenue stream. So, the, you know, you look at the, I've got samples from the town of Concord, and, and I can bring the.
Yeah, you got samples, single.
I'd be delighted to show it to you. Everywhere I go now, they're, everybody's doing pilots for solar. So, there's a value to that, and if you're, if you're interested, the gentleman who's become the state expert is Lane Partridge, and he can be here to explain it when we need to know.
Could I, could I just suggest?
Right now, we just want to know, I want the authority.
I would suggest this gives us flexibility to make a decision in the future. It, it can't.
I may fail on this.
It can't hurt us to do this. So, somebody comes in with a solar project, we say yes to pilot, no to pilot, but this gives us the authority to decide whether we want to do it the new way or the way we've always done it in the past. I don't think this can hurt us.
Okay, so, and, and if we're going to word this, then it's going to be a pilot program for solar, then it needs to be worded that way so that we're not giving pilot agreements to every town that can hire it, it doesn't.
Actually, to be honest with you, I, I like the reasonably general, because like a battery farm is the next thing.
A law?
A battery farm is the next thing.
Split power from a solar farm goes.
Anything that, under state law, allows for a pilot, would be allowed by the Board of Selectmen to negotiate a pilot.
Well, this does.
Not everything gets a. I don't want a battery farm in the town of Acushnet, I don't want leaky acid into my grounds.
I, I'm not, it's lithium ion, but that's beside the point, and.
Whatever.
We're not approving that tonight.
But that's not on the agenda for tonight, but it gives you options to do pilots. You cannot necessarily do pilots for things that are under the law taxable anyway. So, in other words, if you said, we wanted to create a town enterprise zone, you can't do that without an act of the legislature. You can't come up with your own pilot where something is by law taxable.
This does say solar energy installation, it talks about electrical generating equipment, so there's, there's some language there.
Correct, that's fine, it's all the solar revenue, it's solar.
It's solely related. I, I don't think this, I don't think this can hurt us, I think this gives us flexibility in the future.
You have a sample you sent from another town.
Yes, they do.
So, I'd like to just see that.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want to hold this one, or? I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with this, as, assuming the words are fine, I'm comfortable with it, I don't think this hurts us.
Projections? You want to let it ride?
Um, he makes a point, Chairman Cabral makes a point that we can always refuse.
Okay.
Somebody comes in, we say no, we don't want to give you a pilot.
And then just to, just to kind of give you a little, I mean, we get calls all the time from different companies and different places. You know, I think, I think it sounds like a decent thing for us to do, just to look into.
To have it in our quiver, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I may.
I have a second.
Thank you.
They still may come back and say no, that they're giving too much authority too broadly, so I may still lose that argument.
Article eighteen, we're holding because this, this contract's still open. So, at this point, we'll hold it, and this may or may not make the warrant. Nineteen, we sort of voted already, this is the regional agreement with Old Colony, I think we said we're good with this.
No, no, I guess, uh, please, Chief, remove her from civil service.
Who's that?
That's not him.
I'm on the old list. All right, now I need in the list, okay.
You made me move it, remember?
All right.
Hey, I'm working off this old list too, we were good all the way to that point.
We were good up to there, yeah, we moved that.
Come on, where's Brian's list?
I asked Brian to move two of them together.
It's right there, underneath the first piece.
I'm sorry, where's the old one? All right, so that's twenty-eight moving up. Is that the only change? Yeah, twenty-eight moving up, police chief removal.
Apparently, he just caught us, and we were out of order.
Yeah, I had it down here, it was, it would have, we would have gotten there.
So, where, where are we on this one now?
That is now Article twenty, nineteen, that is out, now Article nineteen.
I'll vote.
And it's going to change the end, we still got an article, so be careful.
So, where are you saying we're at, Mr. DeRoche? We did.
We're at Article nineteen.
Eighteen was the fiery and necessary removal from civil service.
Oh.
Um, our, the next title is police chief removal from civil service. And I know we've, I know you, this is not something you, you've already said you don't support, but.
That's correct.
I make a motion to remove the police chief removal from civil service.
I second.
Uh, well, discussion, um, so you don't even want to bring this to town meeting for discussion of the town residents? You don't.
I've talked with the police department concerning this.
Well, let me, let me, Mr. DeRoche, my, my opinion would be, and I, my opinion would be that keeping the police chief in civil service is beneficial to the police chief. And it may be beneficial to the police department. But in my opinion, based on what I've learned and the seminars I've gone to on this topic, and what I understand about civil service in Massachusetts, keeping the police chief in civil service may not be the best thing for the residents of the community or the taxpayers of the community. So, I, I've listened to the police chief, I respect the police chief, I know he wants to keep it in civil service. And, and in my opinion, it's best for the police chief to keep that position in civil service, but it's not best for the residents or the taxpayers to keep it. So, I think, I think, um, the, the reason to put it out before the residents, and I know the chiefs are all going to come to the microphone, and I know they're all going to make their argument, and I, I'd like the opportunity to have that discussion at town meeting and not kill it here, because again, I think it's, it's beneficial to the chief, but not necessarily to the residents of this community.
Well, I think it's beneficial to the force also. You have a brotherhood of the police department, you have someone who works their way up through the ranks, gets to the point of being considered for chief. But the chair's kind of kicked out from under them, you bring somebody else from inside. It's going to hurt the morale of the force. Plus, is also the issue of, how long is this person going to stick around? Are they just here to pad their pension, be here three or four years? Plus, they're from outside of the community, and.
No, 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 not necessarily, no, not necessarily, you're taking us to a place it doesn't need to go. But, you know, we, we had, we had a town council, Copelman and Page, come in, did a presentation to the Board of Selectmen about the pluses and minuses of civil service. So, we had that presentation, you, you weren't there, you couldn't be there, but we had that presentation. I went to the Mass Municipal Association this year with Mr. Noble, he went to do other things. I sat on our presentation of police departments, of police chiefs, of town administrators, talking about this very issue. Civil service is a, is a relic of another time. Most of the communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, two-thirds, and I, I don't have the number here. Two-thirds of the communities in the Commonwealth have already pulled their police departments, not just their police chiefs, out of civil service. So, I, you know, I, I, there are good reasons for getting the police chief out of civil service. Without, that does, that does not diminish the ability to appoint a sergeant from within the police department to the position of chief. It doesn't force us to go outside of the community, but it gives us more flexibility in making sure we put the best person in that job and not necessarily put the person in that job that, that checks all the right boxes. So, you're, by keeping that position in civil service, you're losing personal authority in making sure we have the right person. You, I'm putting you as a selectman, you're giving up personal authority to make sure we have the right person in that job. Every, every, you know, and I, I, and I've said this to everyone, that I've talked to the chief, I said, I'm, I'm very open-minded on who our next chief is. But, but what gives us the most flexibility in appointing that person, whether from within or without, and I'm open-minded on that, whether from within or without, is that we take that position out of civil service. So, if, if the position, we will make it work whether it's in civil service or not, we will make it work. We will have a police chief in the town of Acushnet, but we will lose considerable flexibility by keeping that position in civil service. My, my, based on, and I'm, I'm not going to say that's my opinion, that's based on listening to town council, going to a seminar at Mass Municipal Association, and talking to the, and talking to the police chief, and getting, and getting all that information, and it remains my opinion that the residents and the taxpayers of this community are best served by taking that position out of, out of, out of civil service. And I, Mr. Gaspar, you've supported that in the past, I'm.
I haven't, I spoke, I told the board in an executive session, I know that there's this rumor thing, I've talked to people about this, and I'm shocked that, I said, I, I told the board, I said, if, if you don't hire from, I believe that we have good candidates internally to hire.
Agreed.
And if you don't do that, it'll be extremely detrimental to our public safety department, okay? So, it, 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 you're trying to say that you're better serving the taxpayers, when I absolutely, one hundred percent, I'm on record right now, on TV. when I absolutely, 100%, I'm on record right now, on TV right now. Last time I was in the executive session, apparently those words get misconstrued. I believe that we have two or three very good sergeants internally that are ready to go and hire as the next police chief of the town of Acushnet. I have no interest in looking outside of the town for a police chief.
I'm not saying anything different than that. I'm just saying that of those three, taking the position out of civil service gives you maximum flexibility in picking the one of those three that you want and not being forced in a direction based on the criteria of the test or assessment centers or other standards. Gives you maximum flexibility.
The board, the assessment center is something that we should have the police chief in on to discuss that procedure again. Because I remember it was six to nine months, depending on the scope of the assessment center. You know what? The bottom line is, is I'm sticking by my motion to erase the article and just delete it off the warrant. I believe that we have candidates that consistently can successfully...
So, you don't want the residents to weigh in on this? Because sometimes you do and sometimes you don't.
That's correct.
You don't care what you think on this issue. Just clarifying.
I think it's...
I know it's the police department.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
You standing by this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, I'm a no on that one. All right, striking Article 28. All right.
Well, that's not...
Whatever the number is now, whatever we're going. All right, so let's move to this one. So, going to Article whatever?
20.
20. Which is amending the regional agreement. I think we did this, right? We voted that at the beginning. That's the Old Colony agreement.
That's the Old Colony, yes.
All right, Article 21. Accept Chapter 44 cable fund. What is that?
We had been doing cable. The revenue comes in for the franchise fee, and then we spend it on the payroll to film and to buy equipment. The state has decided to tighten up how we do that and has insisted that it be brought into the omnibus budget and appropriated just like everything else.
But that's what we're doing already in practice, right? We're doing it in practice?
No, it's not.
General fund.
We're not running it through the budget.
No.
No.
We're just throwing it in a fund.
Right. Now, the state's insisting that it be set up as either an enterprise fund or a receipts reserved account.
So, we bring it in and we expense 100% of it into a reserved receipts account?
Correct. And that's what I'm proposing here, is complying with the Department of Revenue Guidance document.
Is this something we should...
Does the... I've seen this, that there's this shifting of the cable funds over, and we keep alluding to the DORs forcing us to do this, and DORs forcing us to do that. Does this raise the levy limit because it's...
No.
No.
So, it's always going to stay in its own separate fund. Right now, it's in a fund, a cable fund. It's kind of its own type of fund. And they're getting rid of that type of fund because everything has to be appropriated. It's either a gift account or a grant account, which has an appropriation as part of the grant, or it has to be appropriated in some other way. So, cable's always been this funky kind of fund where the money goes in, you can spend as much as you have in there. There's no appropriation. So, this is the last year that the DOR has said, "You have to either make it an enterprise fund or a receipts reserved, or it's going into the general fund and all of the money will essentially be free cash." The whole thing goes away. So, what we're proposing here is to make it a receipts reserve fund, which just needs an appropriation. It's still in its own separate fund. It's not a part of the general fund. It doesn't go on the tax...
Levy?
Levy at all. Nope. It's just making an appropriation for that separate fund.
Okay. And by law, the only thing that could be expended out of that account is for cable-related issues, right? We can't go inside that account and stop paying.
Nope.
And that would have to be, you would have to make a budget?
Yep.
We did. It's in the budget.
So, we just put a budget, just a blanket, salaries and expenses. That can be adjusted if you feel any need to adjust the numbers. We kind of looked at what we have been spending and put a number in there because we wanted to make sure that we complied before the town meeting came up. And this being our last year, that we can do something about it. So, those numbers can be adjusted however you want to. But we just did one salary line, one expense line for...
And whatever's left becomes fund.
Whatever...
Sure.
Yeah, but rolls, it stays with the fund. So, you just can't spend more than that.
Comfortable with that, gentlemen?
So, it's kind of similar to a revolving fund, but you have to appropriate salaries and expenses.
Yep.
How do we take money out of that fund?
Would be a vote of town meeting?
Town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you set that up? You know how we set up certain monies out of sewer and water as a capital, 50 grand we do?
Yep.
Can we...
Yes.
So that there's flexibility? Say we have an expenditure like we just did, the $40,000, up to $40,000. Can you do something with that?
I did. I put it in.
So that there's a little fund there that if we need to make it to the Board of Selectmen, just make a vote and say, "Okay, we need to spend the money"?
I set that number at 100,000. Here's the deal, Kev. If you don't spend it...
I know.
It stays with the reserve. And of course, so you put that number high enough so you don't have to say you're sorry. So, you know. But I'm not saying you do it.
It's like send my kid's allowance to $1,000 a week and saying, "Don't spend it".
Well, actually, no. Because this would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
I know, I know. That was one of the stipulations to doing that.
Okay, next article. So, we comfortable with that, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. The next article, authorization to increase financing leasing above three years. Right now, we're limited to leasing equipment for a period of three years. We're proposing to move that to five?
This would not be for labor contracts. This would only be for...
Like golf carts.
Like the golf cart. This is a perfect example of why you want to do it.
Fire trucks, anything.
Anything you wanted to do up to five years. After that, you'd still have to go back to town meeting.
Comfortable with this, gentlemen?
I approve.
Next article, bylaw changes...
Not familiar, I haven't seen you do those.
Yeah.
Oh, this one, yeah, this one. So, this is a good one. This is the one we were talking about earlier. That this would move the selectmen's race until after town meeting. Which I think makes more sense than the process we have in place now, where a new selectman joins the Board of Selectmen in the middle of the budget season.
Like this.
Like this.
Yeah, we've had that discussed conversation. I think it's probably... So, when is that moving the...
Yes, Mr. Deros, I would say you'd agree with that, right?
What are they doing?
Something falling in the middle of the...
I'm just looking to see when...
We're proposing to...
So, you move it to election day, too?
Yeah. Move the... Currently, the bylaws say that we hold the town meeting on the fourth Monday of April. Well, we haven't done that.
Ever.
Okay? So, there's two changes. The first one is the annual town meeting shall be held on the second Monday in May of each year or such other time as determined by the town.
What does vote of the town mean?
The Board of Selectmen.
That's us, okay.
Okay. Article 1, Section 2.2. "The annual election of officers shall be held on the first Saturday following the annual town meeting or at such a time as determined by the vote of the town." So, this would move the election of the selectmen until after town meeting.
The second Monday of May.
Yep.
And then what's the next part of that?
The following Saturday.
The following Saturday.
So, the second Saturday of...
Well, depends. Could be...
The Saturday after. The second Monday and the Saturday after that is the...
What's the Saturday? You got anything to do with it?
It would be not a school day, number one. Okay.
But what's...
So, the election day be on a Saturday instead of a Monday?
On a Monday.
Why do we say the second Monday of May?
That's for town meeting.
That's for town meeting.
Okay, so, second Sunday of May is town meeting.
So, we're going to move the election of the towns' officers, the selectmen's race, if you will, to the Saturday following town meeting, whenever town meeting falls.
So, six days later?
Right.
Okay? On Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday? And when do we determine? When is the date made? That we're going to... All right, so it's going to be...
So, the town meeting this year has the second Monday. The town meeting this year is the second Monday of May.
Right. Which would be the...
It's the 13th. So, this year, town meeting is on the 13th of May. So, it's the second Monday of May is May 13.
Okay.
So, there's the second Monday of May. So, the selectmen's race, instead of being yesterday...
The local elections.
A local election. A local election. Would be on the 18th, this year, on the 18th of May versus yesterday. So, we'd get through town meeting with the existing...
And we're going to...
And then we have the new selectmen starting without the pressure of all this stuff and without the learning.
And we're going to stick...
Yeah, well, we're going to put elections on Saturday?
I like it.
All right.
Why not the following Monday?
Because I want to get away from a school day, number one. And number two, go to a Saturday where people are generally home. Right now, we have an election at 10 o'clock in the morning till 8 o'clock at night. So, virtually, no one can get there before they go to work. So, if you did it on a Saturday, your odds of being able to get somebody in and do the election, let's say, from 8 to 6, just stood-balling, you'd be able to get people to show up to vote without an inconvenience to their schedule.
May I ask a question, please? Right now, our bylaw says we need to have the town meeting on the fourth Monday of April. But we said, "We never do that."
Correct.
So, why are we going to assume... First Monday of April?
That's what it says.
First Monday of April. So, why are we going to assume that we're going to stick to the idea...
I'm sorry, selectmen, yeah.
Of the second Monday? Is that going to be the new norm and we'll be able to push that off? And then...
Well...
I'm just looking at this from campaigning purposes. If I don't know when the election is, how can I campaign at the proper time? If we change the, "Oh, we can't make the town meeting on the, you know, the second Monday of May", then...
It's always set four months in advance. It's always set four months, three, four months in advance. There'll be plenty.
Well, we'll stick to this law. That's what I'm saying. If we change this bylaw, we're going to make it that we stick to this.
The question is, do you like elections on Saturdays, really?
Yeah, I think I do. I think I do. It gives... This past election, it was... So, I go to work in the morning, and it's, you can't get to the polls. It's 10 o'clock. I can't do it. And then it's okay, end of the day, assuming I'm coming home before 8. It's just, I like the flexibility. Other than this, I think we need to open them up at 7 o'clock in the morning.
I think Saturday is a good, valid point. But I've also brought up another issue in my campaign that I would like to bring the three precincts back. If you notice, the amount of voting that goes on in Precinct 1 over the last few years, it's abysmal. 250 people voted for Precinct 1 this year. And I know there was only 1,100 people voted. But the complaint I get, or the comment, I should say, from the citizens listening to them is that they don't feel that they should have to drive across town when we have the ability to use the Council on Aging.
Correct.
So, although this doesn't directly apply...
That's what I was going to say.
Right, I know that. It doesn't directly apply. What is the process to bring back the three precincts?
The town clerk and the Secretary of State set up polling places. One of the concerns that you would have, and I know I'm off-subject, I apologize. One of the problems that you'd have in a presidential election year is there's insufficient parking at the Council on Aging. There's plenty of room inside the building, but there's insufficient parking.
Yeah, we've done that for several years.
Yeah, I do have a time, but let's bring it back. Let's focus on the articles written. I think you should bring it back. I think we should bring it back. But it's a valid point that's not affected by this article.
That's correct.
So, I think...
So, you clarified my question.
Yep.
Very much. And I have Saturday, assuming it's staying at the school, that we can't change it. I mean, we all know what just happened this election. And, you know, we take that equation, you know, we take that out of the equation, having kids in school.
Well, that's what the stars...
Which was the main concern of this whole thing. So, I'm okay to put this up, you know, about it.
Mr. Gaspar, yes? Okay. Net meters, the next one is net meter solar credits is the one I was confused about. I think that's the one... Is this the one with the people that came and represented?
Yes.
All right, I knew it was coming. Okay. Solar, solar.
You want it?
I'm not... Yeah, I'd have more of this.
On a whole... I must discuss it. We can discuss it at Monday next meeting if you want about it.
I believe this one.
Net meter solar credits? Net meter solar credits?
Well, this, what, what this does, just, I mean, just to read it, we can't hold it, I'm not...
Okay.
Authorizes us to enter into energy supply contracts in excess of three years. We can choose to do that or not at some future point, so I, so this, this doesn't commit us to do anything other than give us flexibility to do something in the future with regard to energy contracts, so this doesn't... It permits us to do something in the future, so this, there's nothing in here that hurts us, but we can, we can hold that for a future discussion, if you'd like. Thank you. The next article requires direct deposit of payroll for municipal employees.
Mm-hmm.
And it allows us to exempt employees if there's a hardship.
I'm watching to approve.
The, the direct deposit, is that, is that like, everybody like, still plowing guy?
None, it's just regular employees of the town.
Not contractors.
Okay.
Okay. I, this is, everybody's paid.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is everybody comfortable with it?
Yeah, wish it to approve.
Alright, the next one is a abandoned property resi, uh, registration. I believe this is a bylaw change, and this basically requires abandoned homes, empty homes that be registered with the town. I've read it quickly, this is proposed by Mr., there's a lot to read, it's proposed by Mr. Merritt, but it would just allow us to understand and control our inventory of empty homes, and it sets standards for the, for the management of those properties.
Can you do that?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Nobody likes banks.
This is a regulation from the MMA. This regulation that came out of the MMA, and it's being adopted in like sixty towns, because it's a really serious problem.
It can be.
Yeah.
I think it's very experienced.
And it can be health issues too, so it's buddy neighbors, so...
If you're comfortable doing it, we can do it now, or we can hold it till next time?
I'm fine.
I'm fine, so we would, I see in the back here, there's violations and penalties, those would be applied to the bank?
Whoever owns the property, whoever the owner, property owner is.
Okay.
And it says, you know, basically register it, if it's gonna be empty, just register it with the town. So we're comfortable, yes, yes?
And when you don't, you upkeep your property, in three months, we're gonna back you with a fine?
If, if it's an abandoned property.
Yeah.
The biggest problem is, it's not regulating, if you live in your house and you don't maintain it, that's not regulating that. It's a foreclosure or an abandonment of a home.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this next one regulates storage of trailer boxes, requires a license for a trailer box stored on your personal property?
Did you skip this?
Yeah, sorry, I meant...
Probably, zoning, isn't that one?
Article twenty-seven.
That's kinda, that's a long, convoluted thing.
That one's gonna take some time, and there's gonna be a public hearing with the board of, the planning board on that one. And mostly, it's technical corrections, but...
So where's that, is that appended to, I just, I just merged these two together?
It's twenty-seven and a half pages, I'm not gonna put it under the word.
Game is a packet on it, but there's, there's a...
So, Mr. DeRosa, you're gonna wanna, you're gonna wanna, Mr. Merritt? He put a proposal together that's probably fifty, sixty pages, whatever it is. Um, is a lot of changes in, in the way the bylaw structure is, and it's, it's gonna makes, it's gonna make it advantageous for some property owners and disadvantage some property owners from what I've got.
Yeah, see, I have no specifics here.
I do want it, but I will...
I mean, the increase...
Sorry, just...
It's just a convoluted, you have to read it.
I'll make sure he gets copies of it, so...
Alright, the next one's on storage of trailer boxes, just basically says you can have one, but you gotta, you gotta get a permit for it, you gotta register it with the town, we're gonna give you a license for a period of time.
Have they determined how much this is, what kind of much a permit is?
Is that in here?
Storage for trailer boxes, yeah. Temporary licenses.
So future, future approval by this body.
Didn't we approve some of the...
I've seen them around town, people back them in, you know.
See, here's the deal, you build a shed on your property, you need a permit.
Right.
Okay? You drop a trailer on your property, you need nothing.
And there can, they can be unsightly, depending on how many of you got, so...
Kind of on kind of...
And where you put them, and, yeah, exactly, they wanna like, I mean, shipping containers.
Right, that's basically what it is.
So this is trying to, this is trying to put some control in that stuff.
Without the wheels.
Track the trail, they can leave the wheels on, I've seen that.
So, I think it's, I think it's reasonable, proposed by our building inspector, I think.
Okay.
We're comfortable with that, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, Hamlin Street right away, the Hamlin Street Bridge is going to be reconstructed. Apparently, we do not need to take any property by means of...
Yet.
Yet, but we're reserving the right to do that if we have to. Correct, including this some conservation land.
This some conservation land, this some private land, that we might, but right now, the current plan, which is only twenty-five percent built, does not indicate that we'll need to take any property, but the DOT has given us this article and said you might wanna put it in, because if we go forward and we determine we need to take some property, you need the legislative authorization to do so.
Is there something I can read to see, or see a plan, whose property we're gonna take?
Well, we don't, none right now, nobody's, nobody's potential of taking a property.
You won't get anything off of that.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
You won't get anything.
Good luck with that.
Just have some people who live along that way and...
Yeah.
They had a public, they had a public hearing...
That's like a road lane.
On this project.
Back in September?
And one neighbor came and asked some great questions, and they actually made alterations to the plans based on those comments. So, one person's comments do matter.
Okay.
Um, so, but right now, the plan that you have in that eleven seventeen sheet of paper is the twenty-five percent built. So they have to complete the plan, they have to come back to the Board of Selectmen, you know, especially if it's land taking, but I need the legislative authorization. If there is a land taking, I need the legislative authorization to do it.
Town meeting needs to approve it, we don't want a special town meeting for this and hold up the bridge project, so...
Correct.
We were...
Right now, I'm not planning appropriating any money, and of course, the next question that Mr. Gaspar's gonna ask me is, okay, well, if you're not appropriating any money, where are you gonna get it? And the answer is, it can be used, you can use chapter ninety money to do it, and then we can refill the money we've taken at a future town meeting.
Understood, okay.
Uh, next article, I've given up on the numbering, is school fields improvement. This is twenty-five thousand dollars from community preservation account. I believe this is related to the soccer fields that are used by the Kuschnik Youth Soccer Association.
This money was, um, I saw a CPA meeting or CPC meeting, and so it, so, you know, it was, it was approved to, to send over, so we're approving it now at the Board of Selectmen.
You, you only wanna approve it as to, it goes on the warrant.
Yes, approved by town meeting, yeah. So we're approving it as a, what it's like, and put it on the warrant, it could be approved by town meeting members.
A motion to approve.
Comfortable, yes, yeah. Parting ways facades, another twenty-five thousand dollars, um, just keeping that building going.
Mm-hmm.
And we got it, this, we got it. Comfortable with that one?
Motion to approve.
Uh, next one also, HVAC expansion to the parting ways and town hall buildings. Um, and we're going in both buildings, we're going with a duckless system here?
Yeah, the idea is not to have bulky boxes hanging out the window.
So these gonna be wall units?
They'd be wall units, correct.
And maybe you'll have heat in this, in your office, Mrs. Leonard?
Well, we don't wanna make her that comfortable.
We don't, I know, so, the, the, the selectmen's meeting room, um, what do we call that one?
Lisa's office.
Lisa's office. Lisa's office doesn't have heat.
Okay.
So, it'd be nice to have heat, so, comfortable with that one. Um, the rest of these... Alright, so no, they're not, okay, so next one, cemetery board. Allows the cemetery board, this one's routine, allows the cemetery board to pay compensation to the members of the cemetery.
For working.
For work within the cemetery. That's routine to town meeting every single year.
Mm-hmm.
Park and Recreation Commission allows them to determine and perform work within the park and deter, and set compensation for members and employees, and we see that budget, so, right, but this is just authorizing that.
Okay.
Uh, the next article, oh, these are revolving funds, this is the revolving fund for the library, for the Conservation Commission, for the Park and Recreation Commissioners, and for the Council on Aging Board. These are existing funds that are in place, no change from past year limits?
Uh, no, it's exactly the same.
Okay, so these funds exist, we've gotta reauthorize them every year, so, so allows these entities to take money in and expend money out.
Through the revolving.
Through the revolving fund, so this one, this is a routine article.
So if the library sells three hundred bucks worth of books, they take that three hundred bucks, put it revolve, but allows them to spend that money out during the calendar year.
Correct.
Up to a certain dollar amount, which is later.
Well, the, the book thing is sort of different. We sell the books to the library trustees for a buck, they, the friends then sell it, the friends keep the money and use it for the library. This is the revolving fund for library activities, if they do like a...
Okay, bad, bad analogy I used, not books?
Not, anything with books would work.
Up to that amount.
Let, I, I use the example, if the Council on Aging takes a bus to Foxwoods and you're, uh, and you pay to go on the trip, they can receive the money and pay it out for the trip. It's in, it's out.
Right, right, right.
Uh, next one, good segue to the next article, is the authorization for the library trustees to sell books for a dollar, so, that's also routine. Uh, the next article is putting a hundred thousand dollars against our OPEB liability, which is something we did for the first time last year.
Mm-hmm.
Proposed again this year, not, um, optional in my opinion, but, um, we've got a major liability, we're chipping at it, we're throwing some money at it, and we've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there now?
Two, two-ten plus a hundred thousand, so three-ten.
Three-ten, okay.
Julie, you says this can affect that bond rating to a certain extent?
I'm sorry, what were we talking about?
The OPEB funding, the hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so, um, just briefly, I had a meeting with our financial advisors today, um, because I know one of our long-term goals is to have our rate readjusted, uh, to be rerated, because I think we can get a higher rating than we have now. Um, but there are a lot of factors that they look at when they do a rerating, um, and one of them is, um, OPEB and whether we're, um, contributing something. Um, so what the advisors had said today was that, um, obviously, a hundred thousand doesn't put a huge dent in the overall liability, but to the agencies, they consider that something, whereas if you put zero, that shows no effort at all, so, um, they like to see at least something go in, um, even if it's a small number like a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's one of the many things that, um, we're gonna be looking at when we're going to get rerated, um, so I did mention it today, that, um, because I know it's on the warrant. Um, so if we can keep this in there, that would be great for us. Um, if we don't fund anything for OPEB, it's going to, um, take a lot longer for us to get rerated, um, and to have the positive rerating, because we'll have to show good faith toward paying that liability. Um, and we won't be able to do it if we just funded it with, if we put zero money into it this year, we'll have to wait a few more years to show that we've made a good faith effort.
So now we've got some consistency in what we're doing?
Yes.
We're two years in a row of, more than, well, more than that, actually, we just...
No, two years.
Well, we rolled some money we had already.
But it wasn't a real OPEB fund.
It wasn't?
It was, it was an OPEB stabilization.
We need to move it into the state's trust fund.
So, yeah, so if we, if we continue the trend this year, this would be our second year adding to it, um, and that would be really well looked upon by the credit rating agencies.
We can fix that this year?
We're gonna fix it this year.
Okay, alright. So, comfortable with that, gentlemen?
So, um, may wanna update us on that comment? You don't have to do it exactly now.
Okay.
I might just caught something that seemed to be...
No, we talked about it before, we'll talk again.
I don't think that, is it okay?
Do you have that word?
No. No, it's fine, I love, you know, it doesn't really... The motion was ruled unacceptable by the state, we have to redo the motion.
So the motion, they take...
For the OPEB fund?
Yes.
Yeah, the motion to roll our funds into the state fund was...
It didn't follow the format that they wanted done, and so they're making us redo that.
So how, we, we're fixing that here?
We're gonna fix it in the motion at town meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So we just left, we, the hundred we appropriated last year?
Yes.
That just sat with the two hundred that we...
Correct.
Back in the era, we found another, our rock, that's, 'cause that's what was the discussion of the board, that, it was like a hundred.
And then we're gonna take that, the money in the...
So we'll be moving four hundred to the state.
Correct.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
The hundred, that'll make it four hundred, and then we'll finally, so we haven't accrued no interest in the last year on that.
Very minor.
It wasn't what we anticipated at the...
At the old, the, the stabilization rate, which was about two percent.
Correct, but when we were talking about the state trust was, that one that we went to, was it at six and a half, seven percent?
We weren't able to...
Depending on what the markets did in that.
Right.
It depends, if I did it in November, it was nine percent, if I did it in January, it was seven percent, but still, it's a hell of a lot better than two percent.
We're stuck, we're comfortable with that one?
Put it in October, and the markets tanked in December, which they did.
Yep.
You could be down running on it, right?
Correct, well, you, the state has a guarantee, uh, so you're not gonna lose principal after. Okay, that's the most important thing, after that, it's up to the market.
So you can never lose?
That's why you go to the state's trust fund.
It's not a bad deal, so, so your, your losses are capped.
Right.
Why can't everybody get involved in that plan?
Because it's a state plan, it's a state plan.
There's usually only two guarantees by the government, death and taxes, right?
By OPEB, we're comfortable moving a hundred thousand dollars?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Gaspar, quick one, yep. Uh, moving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into stabilization, stabilization is the town's...
Is that a good number?
Savings one is...
I mean, I know it's a placeholder, depending on...
Right, right, it could go up, it could go down, because that's where we would put any change.
Correct.
But we still wanna be somewhat focused on that two fifty number to the best of my ability.
Yeah. We've done a good job over the last couple of years with palacane, almost a million boxes.
Your charge to me, when, was the old board, the original board that I gave the word for, where that was supposed to be ten percent?
Half a million.
Correct.
And then last year, we did like four hundred.
So we're now at the two point seven.
Yeah, we made a good, positive impact on our stabilization, which again, goes back to a bond rating.
Yes.
So...
Yes.
There's a theory of ten percent, right, Mr. DeRosa, ten percent?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, oh, well, your overall budget is, however, if you keep increasing your budget, you're never gonna catch up with your ten percent, right? But to try to be clo, as close as you can...
Exactly.
Is a good faith effort, just like the OPEB funding is, to show bond rating agencies, they're moving in the right direction, not in the, in the wrong direction.
Exactly.
That's, that's what we're doing.
Uh, last article is a resolution of gratitude to those who've served the town. Um, does this include people that have passed and people that are no longer in service of the town?
Correct.
People that have passed, yeah.
Well, they left for whatever reason.
Okay, so people who served the town and no longer do, so that's the last one, I'm assuming everybody's comfortable with that.
Yes.
Okay. So, we got a few of them, um, do you want, want me to recap what I think we're gonna revisit?
Yeah, I can check it off, just to make sure I kept the correct...
Alright, I'm good, I'm using my numbers.
Just tell us what the article is about.
Three, uh, yeah, well, we're good, we're good for a while, three and four.
Three and four.
Eight, nine, thirteen. We're gonna come back on thirteen, right?
Correct, mhm.
Uh, alright, just, well, my numbering might change. Fire EMS removal from civil service was a hold. That's, I've got that as eighteen, it might be nineteen, no, it is still eighteen, that's still eighteen.
It's eighteen.
Alright, so let's go to what might be twenty-four, net meter solar credits, we're holding that.
Correct.
Uh, zoning amendment, uh, article twenty-seven zoning amendment is a hold.
Correct.
And I think that's the last one, that's the last hold.
Yes.
Will you agree?
Yes.
So the goal, the goal is, again, we're coming back Monday, the goal is, I'm sorry?
Five P M.
Monday at five P M. Is to, is to get through the budget and talk about anything in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, then on Wednesday to meet with the finance committee, and hopefully to wrap this up, so we'll get through the budget and maybe any of these other open articles.
Well, the Monday meeting, will that satisfy, we'll be able to talk about that and not have to go on Wednesday? I mean, what's our...
Perhaps, yeah, perhaps.
Because it will satisfy my need to catch up on this information.
Would we need to have posted that by Monday night?
We, um, we could post them both, you guys cancel.
Alright, I think we should post it, let's post it anyway, just so we...
If I feel satisfied, I mean, that is my biggest concern at the beginning of the night.
So, uh...
A few, a few...
We have a few, yeah, no one.
Monday night too, can we just...
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully.
You, we can get all the ones that we held, you said you were gonna give the whole board some information on the pilot thing?
Sure.
And Mr. DeRosa's gonna need the, um, from Mr. Merritt, that big packet of the changes, bylaws, proposals, it's, um, probably wanna sink your teeth into that sooner rather than later?